Hey, I'm the call to order, a regular meeting in the Planning Commission. Fellas, could you do roll call, please?
Sure. Chairperson Bob McCool.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Lisa Ritchie.
Here.
Commissioner Phyllis Harden here. David Harper.
Here.
Barry Malia.
Here.
Ben Miller.
Here.
Hi, everyone. So.
Oh, Jason, I didn't hear Jason.
Here.
Anthony Stewart.
You know, unmute.
Here.
Steve Whitty.
Here.
Planner Stephen Williams.
Here.
Attorney Dan Harvey.
Here.
Okay, that's it.
All right. Okay, so we do have, next item is public comment on consent to agenda and non-agenda items. This would be really anything not related to the upcoming public hearing. If you do have any comments, there is a, we're using the raise your hand option from Zoom. And I see we do have one person, so again, this is public comment on non-agenda items. So Martin, it looks like Deborah has her hand up.
Okay, I'm Deborah, I didn't mean to raise my hand. I'm just concerned about, is there still going to be a right turn signal from Sham, I mean, a right turn lane, left turn lane on Shamrock Drive to 88th Street when all of this is completed? Left turn lane.
Do we have an answer for that, staff?
It's a, it's a comment on the agenda item, so I suggest we circle back to it once we've gotten through the presentation.
Okay, we can do that. All right, thank you, Deborah.
Okay.
So anybody else has any non-agenda, a public comment for non-agenda items? I'm not seeing any at this point, so we'll move on. We do have a minutes from our May 5 meeting. That's item 3A, and I will entertain a motion for approval of the May 5 minutes.
Move to approve.
Seconded.
Motion from Commissioner Ritchie, who had the second.
Harper.
No, Commissioner Harper. All right, and we're doing a roll call vote?
Yes. Chairperson Cool.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Lisa Ritchie.
Yes.
David Harper.
Yes.
Barry Malia.
Yes.
Ben Miller.
Yes.
Jason Reese.
Yes.
Anthony Stewart.
Yes.
Steve Whitty.
Yes.
Phyllis Harden, yes, thank you.
And that motion passes. All right, I'm going to start a public hearing to review and comment on the final subdivision plot for Rock Creek Ranch filing 25, a Rock Creek Ranch PUD Amendment number 15, and a final site plat, site plan for the park at Rock Creek. So final plat is to subdivide the property to create one developable, one developable lot for the multifamily apartment development proposed and three tracks, including track A along the northern edge of the Hudson Harris Reservoir, which is proposed to be dedicated to the town. Item number 4A is an amendment to the Rock Creek PUD to allow for the proposed residential use of the property. And this PUD amendment proposes to change the existing zoning from Regional Employment and Activity Center, RAC, to Residential 2A zoning. Item 4B is a final plat, site plan for the Park at Rock Creek Development, which includes 180 multifamily apartments in addition to a clubhouse, leasing center, and public parking over the 22.78 acre property, which is 4C. And let's see, with that, I think I'll save my comments for probably prior to public comments. One, one thing I just want to bring up before we start presentation is just to the commissioners, I mean, this, this is a, you know, final plat, final development plat, final plat site. There's a lot to cover tonight, so probably would be, be wise for us to maybe pick a check-in time for a stopping point. Anybody have any initial thoughts on that? Do we want to go till 10 o'clock, 9:30? Anybody have a problem going until 10 and then checking in? I could maybe get some, some feedback from commissioners.
I'm fine with that, I think maybe a check-in at 9:30, just to feel like if we think there's a chance we can wrap up by 10 and kind of set an idea for how much longer we want to go.
That sounds good, sorry, that sounds good to me.
Okay, anybody not okay with that? Right, and then just for the public, you know, information, we'll, like I said, as, we'll do this 9:30 check-in to see where we are and decide how much, how much longer to go if we, and we'll just try to gauge where, where we are in the process. All right, so with that, Stephen, do you have a staff presentation for us?
I do.
Excuse me. Do you want the proof of publication?
Oh, my apologies, I, you know, let me get back to my, yeah, I jumped again on that, yes, is there proof of publication, fellas?
Yes, there is.
Okay, thank you. All right, now staff presentation.
Good evening, Stephen Williams, Town Staff, you can see my screen all right?
We can.
Okay, so tonight's development item includes a subdivision plat, a rezoning PUD amendment, and a final plat site plan within Rock Creek Ranch. The applicant Steelwave is among the several, and along with several members of their design team who are in attendance tonight. They have a presentation of their own as well as a video to show you. In addition to myself, Alex Aronello, the town's Public Works Director is in attendance and can field questions related to transportation, traffic, and this project's coordination with the ongoing South 88th Street Improvement Project. Staff has also retained Smith Environmental and Engineering to provide a third-party review of the environmental report. This analysis was included as attachment to staff's memo on the final plat site plan, and Rebecca Hannan from Smith Engineering has also joined this meeting and will be available for questions. Sorry, I'm manipulating two screens and it doesn't want to switch for me. Okay. So the subject property, which is often referred to as the Zaharius property, is illustrated here in red. The parcel lies immediately east of 88th Street, north of the Hodgkins Harris Reservoir, and the US 36 Highway borders it to the northeast. There are several jurisdictional boundaries that occur within this area as well that make this property unique within Superior. In green, you see land that's technically within unincorporated Boulder County, and then in like the light shaded blue, you see the city of Louisville on the other side of US 36. As stated, the application includes three components, which are sequence in the following order: subdivision plat, which is reflected here, the rezoning request, and a final plat site plan. Although this application is separated out by components, it is intended to be considered collectively. Both the replat and the rezoning are based on specific, on this specific development proposal. The graphic for the plat, as I stated, is illustrated here. The Zaharius property, which is currently not platted, includes over 23 acres of land. The proposed plat includes five basic components. It would create one 15.45 acre development lot, three tracks as land, three tracks of land, and dedicate roughly one acre of the south of land to the South 88th Street right-of-way. This dedication will facilitate the current South 88th Street Improvement Project that's currently being coordinated with the Public Works Department. This right-of-way dedication is illustrated in gray here on the west side of the parcel. And then the other, the three tracks include a 3.79 acre tract, Track A, illustrated in green, which will be dedicated to the town, and then two tracks that will remain privately owned, Track C, further north, and then Track B to the southeast. Lot 1 Block 1 will include roughly 15 and a half acres and accommodate the private development improvements associated with Steelwave's apartment proposal. In addition to the plat streets illustrated here, the additional plat streets illustrated here have been provided to clarify the easements that are in play. They relate to emergency and service access, public access for the trails and parking area that are proposed within Track A, as well as the developments' utility needs. Each of these easement types have been coordinated with the final plat site plan, which we'll get to shortly, and with the respective third-party referral agencies, including Excel and Rocky Mountain Fire. The second aspect of this supplemental relates to the PUD amendment. A PUD amendment plan reflected here follows the established format for Rock Creek Ranch and includes a required map, statements, tables, and certificates. The Zaharius property is currently zoned RAC, which stands for Regional Activity and Employment Center. RAC zoning constitutes the most intense commercial zoning designation within Rock Creek and does not allow for residential uses. Steelwave is proposing a rezoning to Residential 2A to accommodate their proposed apartments. The Rock Creek PD includes four residential zoning classifications that vary in density and height allowances. The R2A zoning was selected primarily for its height allowance of 50 feet. The zoning classification does allow for 18 dwelling units per acre, but the 180 apartments proposed would yield a density of just less than eight units per acre. The development standards table, illustrated on the left, clarifies certain development allowances that would occur should this rezoning, certain development allowance changes, should this rezoning be approved. The minimum open space requirement for the zoning, the existing zoning in RAC is 20%. So that's the, the minimum that they would have to do if this property was developed commercially. But rezoning this area to residential increases this requirement to 45%. This update would also reduce the maximum height allowance from 120 feet down to 50 feet. This table also clarifies that although the R2A zoning would permit the 18 dwelling units per acre noted, the specific PD amendment will further restrict the density of this entire property, not just for this application, but in perpetuity to the eight dwelling units proposed. And density, just so we're all on the same page, is calculated by the overall, you know, 20-plus acre area rather than the development lot of 15.45 acres. As stated, the four PD zoning classifications within Rock Creek, of those four, the R2A designation was selected to accommodate the proposed height of 50 feet. This designation also allows for them to have apartment units that cluster more than six within one building. The PD also established the required building setbacks. Because only one lot is proposed, these setbacks are based on the exterior boundaries that are in play. So this illustration here on the right clarifies that a 40-foot setback will apply from the 88th Street right-of-way. And it's important to clarify, too, that this 40-foot setback applies to the new parcel line, not the designated right-of-way area. So it's 40 feet from, from the, from the new right-of-way boundary proposed. And then it's 30 feet from the north and the northeast, and 20 feet from the open space that exists to the south. Those are the PD requirements. And that, this designation or this boundary also changes along the south. It would have been along the Hodgkins Harris parcel boundary, but now that 20 feet is moved to the Track Day boundary because Track Day is proposed as open space. So Rock Creek, the Rock PUD, PUD was adopted, and just to give you some background and history, was adopted in the late 1980s and, and applied a commercial zoning designation to this property. The Anderson property, you might remember, shown here now as the lanterns at Rock Creek, also received this designation back in the 80s for commercial use, and the proximity to US 36 was cited as one of the reasons for the designation. And the assumption is that there was a connection to 88th Street that was presumed to occur in order for these to develop residentially, or I mean commercially. So that never happened, and neither property developed commercially. The lanterns at Rock Creek was rezoned two years ago to develop residentially. So the other context that this illustration highlights is that the surrounding zoning, it's primarily the Residential 1B zoning classification. And generally in this area, that means a single-family, single-family use. The lanterns in Rock Creek is actually a duplex use that also fits within that zoning classification. The other zoning classification that exists already within Saddle Brook is the R2A, which is the same as what Zaharius is proposing. Or Steelwave, I should say, sorry. The proposed rezoning can also be found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, which includes moderate intensity residential uses and high-value open space acquisition among the preferred land uses. This rezoning, however, would eliminate the commercial and office uses from occurring on this site. So do we want to pause, and anybody have any questions on the first two aspects of this? Otherwise, I'm moving on to the final plat site plan summary. Hearing none, I guess I'll, I'll continue. The third aspect of this development proposal is the final plat site plan, which details how the 22 apartment complexes are proposed to be sited, as well as how this park apartment complex will tie into the surrounding area. The context site plan is reflected here. The Meadowbrook neighborhood lies to the west, west of 88th Street. The Lakeview and Saddle Brook communities lie south of the reservoir. The area illustrated in gray is currently owned by CDOT and part of the US 36 right-of-way. The parcel shaded in blue contains the Hodgkins Harris Reservoir, which is owned and maintained by Boulder County. Two points of vehicle access are proposed to the apartment complex. The northern access is shown and proposed to align with Promenade Drive access, so this is at staff's request that this access was, was located here. The southern access occurs just north, just north of Track A. So this is that alignment that is with Promenade, I was hovering over the wrong screen, sorry. And this is the one that occurs to the south, just north of the public parking area that's proposed. The applicant has also provided an eight-foot-wide trail that circles the property, that's shown in orange, and then a 10-foot-wide sidewalk along the east side of 88th Street. Routing the trail down 88th Street was selected over a trail closer to US Highway 36, partly because of the wetlands and drainage area that exists along the highway, partly because of grading, but also it has the benefit of doubling as a good access route along 88th Street that currently doesn't exist now for Monarch High students. So in addition to the right-of-way dedication getting us that 10 feet of land, there's an additional three-foot-wide easement that is part of this proposal to afford that full 10 feet width. The final plat, final plat site plan also illustrates how the two, the 22 apartment buildings would be laid out over the site. There's five apartment buildings located along 88th Street and oriented to front the street. Those are shaded in red. An additional six buildings are located here in blue, and they're actually sited to face either north or south away from each other, and there's internal alleys between them. So there's an alley here, green space here, an alley here, additional green space, and then another alley. And then there's another cluster of homes here shaded in purple that are all oriented around to face this internal triangular-shaped open space. The other units, there's four located right along the reservoir that face the reservoir, and then a fifth building here shown in the screen outline that actually fronts towards the natural vegetation within Track C. And then within this orange area here is the clubhouse and the leasing center, just northeast of the southern access to this, this development. This graphic just helps illustrate where the primary open spaces or native landscaping remains within the site. The overall site plan illustrated here clarifies the specific building layout, types proposed for each building location, and begins to illustrate how product variety will be ensured. For instance, the five buildings along South 88th Street will include a mix of building layouts, A, B, and C, so you can see those labels, the A, or the A label here, the D label here. And then internally within those, you also see where they've accommodated ADA accessible units, and there's two types of ADA accessible units. There's the A and the B type. So the architectural sheets, which we'll get to in a moment, clarify that the building layout variation also involves changes to the building elevation, so the exterior appearance that you'll see here shortly. In addition, four material and color palettes are also proposed to ensure product variety. So a combination of tools are used to ensure this product variety throughout the site. So while frontage along 88th Street includes a mix of building types, and that's the same for the south property line here, there are other clusters of buildings that have the same building layout. You can see Building E layout kind of repeated through here, and then here, in these locations, building orientation kind of staggered locations, and then the materials and colors play a stronger part in, in creating that diversity. So sidewalk locations and pedestrian connections are also illustrated along with site details like parking counts, trash enclosures, bike racks, utility meters are more identifiable on this level of plan than on the, the context site plan that we just saw. So we've been real careful to ensure, so the ADA walkways are illustrated in red, though we'll get a little bit clearer on the next few slides. This is the, so the, most of the primary partial plan sheets are separated into northern and southern segments. When we get into the landscape plan sheets and irrigation where there's more detail, they actually have more, more sub-areas than just north or south. But what we're going to discuss today and what we're going to show you today is just the north and south site plans to get you familiar with the project. The northern segment is reflected here. At this scale, you can better see the sidewalk alignments and widths, building orientations, and elements like surface parking counts and locations of handicap spaces. The proposed grading and retaining walls within Track C are also more apparent, as is that location of that eight-foot-wide trail that kind of goes along that south, the south boundary of Track C. The northernmost segment of a 12-foot sound wall here is in this, in this corner, too, is illustrated. The sound wall doesn't have to, is really not that long in this project, but it does cover this area here, and it is in close proximity to the trail, so we made sure that there was sufficient landscaping, and there's an illustration to reflect that as well as part of the development application. The southern half of the site plan includes similar details regarding retaining wall improvements within Track A. So you can see some of these walls located here and here, and that is in order to keep, to level the site and to keep the impacts north of the retaining walls and minimize the impacts on the adjacent tracks. This graphic also illustrates the improvements proposed within Track A, which include this parking area in the south. And one of the conditions or the requirements that, that staff's related to the applicant is that this parking area doesn't need to be as big as it is for the amenity. So originally, this was, the regional trail was proposed to route north along, that was our preferred path, but the cost analysis, as I mentioned, didn't pan out, and there was too much grade work involved. So this ended up being the preferred route. When we don't have that big of a regional trail, this parking area doesn't need to be as, as large. So the recommendation from staff is to reduce that parking area roughly in half, and that's been related to the applicant, they've agreed to it, and it'll be reflected in their next supplemental that goes to the town board. Site plan also illustrates the location of the clubhouse and leasing center a little bit better. So you see this clubhouse is located here and oriented to face north, the leasing center is visible from this north-south route, but you, as you'll see in the elevations, the actual entrance to the site faces to the, to the south. And the entrance of the clubhouse, technically, even though the long building facade faces, faces back west. So you do see the clubhouse entrance as you're coming in this primary drive. So because no public streets are proposed as part of this application, staff worked with the applicant to ensure that we got some additional landscaping elements and that same connectivity that we were talking about. And that really occurs within the outlots, but it also occurs along these alleys with, with certain sidewalk connections. And you'll see here that the asphalt, you know, transitions to stamped concrete crossings to help identify and set off the pedestrian realm from the vehicular realm. But the enhanced landscaping is what this is, along those alleys, is what this illustration is really intended to, to reflect. It also helps reflect some of the balcony elements and that diversity that we'll get into when we get to the elevations. And then over here on the bottom right is that illustration of that sound wall in relation to the eight-foot-wide trail, and then the landscape spacing in between it, so that it doesn't feel too enclosed in that location. So the park proposal includes five different apartment buildings within the final plat site plan. Two sheets are used to, to reflect these, each building type. Staff has consolidated each of those five plans down into one, one sheet to show each of the elevation. So you see the front elevation on the top left, the rear elevation on the bottom right, and then the left and right side elevations. And east and west in front, and north and south aren't used because these are in different locations. They're, they're oriented in different directions. The front elevation on the top illustrates, so this, oh, excuse me, this, this slide actually illustrates Layout A, which is reflected in this color scheme in Material Palette 1. So the application's elevation sheet also includes a layout table and a site plan key, which are illustrated here. The layout table clarifies the floor area distribution, the number of apartment units per building, the number of buildings of this type that are proposed throughout the development. For Layout A, you can see that the square footage of each type ranges from 1,412 square feet all the way up to 1,801 square feet. The bedrooms are pretty consistent, three bedrooms, and then somewhere between two and three and a half baths. The overall floor areas noted here, and then the number of layouts that are proposed throughout the site of this Layout A type are illustrated here. The number of units within that type is illustrated here. So there's six units within each of these, and then the locations, as well as the color schemes, are illustrated by this key. So for Layout A, there's one on 88th Street, and then three more clustered around the primary kind of internal open space within the development. The material and colors within Scheme 1 include this brown stone, an off-white lap siding, a dark brown lap siding, and then dark blue shingles. So what you see in their architectural design is primarily three elements on the front elevation, which is illustrated here. It's the stone, the off-white lap siding, that's kind of an accent. You can see a little bit more on the straight-on front elevation, and then the, the dark blue shingles. The, the dark brown is something that you see more on the rear elevation as we get back to that here in a second. These materials help distinguish individual units from one another, including, and then there's, but roof lines, as well as architect, other architectural elements also help with distinguishing those individual units. So second-floor balconies, you can see in certain locations on this perspective, there's one here, there's one here, there's one here. When they don't occur on the front elevation, they occur on the back elevation. So you can see that a little bit more here. So the only one that doesn't have a second-floor balcony is the one located here towards the bottom, bottom left of the front elevation, because it's a, it's a one-story unit. It's on that, that ground level. There's a second unit above it in this configuration that does have that second-floor balcony. The other element that this, you know, yellow is highlighting is just the locations of the entryway, so from the front elevation. And the reason we're highlighting this is just to clarify the spacing and then the distribution of those entries. So one of the ways that they're distinguishing these units, you can see better when I move this over, is they have two different types of roofs to distinguish one unit from another, but they are clustered next to each other in this location, and that's for the, really for the benefit of the interior floor plans, which I'll let the applicant kind of get into. And then for this, this elevation on the left, two additional And then for this, this elevation on the left, two additional entryways are located to bring that total up to six. This entryway is, this entryway reflected here on the left elevation is also right in here. It's just you, you come in, come in straight and you take a right to get into this, this bottom unit. But then again, like what I was mentioning is the, when you don't have a, a second story balcony on the front elevation, you have it on the rear elevation. And this actually helps distribute these amenities so that you're not all facing out the same direction. And, and most instances, these balconies aren't located right next to one another. So that's the first floor plan. Elevation or layout B is shown here. This elevation includes eight units that are proposed at three stories. Four of the interior units have slightly taller roof. You can kind of see that break. So there is some ridgeline break and some reduction in massing on each building end. The rear, rear elevation is better reflected without this on here. Sorry about that. Reflects an even, an alternating distribute, distribution of single and two-car garages. So that's, you know, four each. And this is how they propose their color scheme in the back. So whereas in the front, there's, it's pretty uniform, you know? In the back, there is some, some consistency or some shared colors. So there's just a nice variety of how they're actually applying their color scheme. And then for this particular unit, this layout B, it's proposed in two locations as illustrated on this, this plan. Palette two here more clearly reflects the, the materials. So for this one, it's a red brick, that same off-white lap siding, a red-brown siding that's mostly visible on the rear elevation, and then the light brown shingle, which helps characterize the front elevations. Layout C is reflected here. And this is the same, so in this red area, this red box, it's the same building essentially as the first layout you saw, layout A, with two additional units here highlighted on the right. I'll pull this down again. It's actually supposed to appear as I click through it, but it's not working for me. So I apologize for that. But you get the front elevation, the left elevation, the right elevation, and the rear elevation. And you can see, you know, the, the articulation, the materials are, are, you know, we have foresighted architecture for each of, each of the units proposed. And then this map here again illustrates how many of those different types of units and then the color distribution for each of those as proposed throughout the site. So three occur within the triangular shaped open space, two occur along the reservoir, and then one occurs along South 88th Street. And then again, the color and material palette for this one is, is distinct. It's got the lighter buff stone, the off-white siding, which is kind of the consistent theme throughout, a light brown lap siding, and then a dark purple shingle. You can see this in the various layouts they proposed here. So this one is in layout C, this is in layout A, this is in layout D, and then layout E. And then again, this one actually shows where this, so there's a, a different site plan key on these sheets, and this shows where this color scheme is proposed throughout the development. So this color scheme, different from this actual layout C floor plan, is, is proposed in six locations throughout the site. And then layout D is proposed here again, that red box kind of shows you the consistency. This is the kind of the base element, that layout A. And then in addition, in, in difference to, or to be different than the last one, instead of proposing two additional three-story units over here, they're proposing two additional two-story units to help with the building height and the massing variation. This also gives them more product variety as, I'll move that again, sorry. As you have the, the, the single level walk-up units on the ground level on each unit, and then a, a second level flat above it. And then each of these townhomes internally lives as a three, a full three-floor apartment complex. So they do live like townhomes, even though apartments are, are proposed. And then you see that product variety again in the back here. And then this is intended to clarify where this particular layout, layout D is proposed throughout the site and then that color variation that is proposed with it. So one of the key elements here is that we, we wanted that math. This is the, the one with the most massing reduction. It occurs on both ends of the units. So even though there's eight units proposed within here, you know, half of them are on a, or over a two-story product. And that was critical to, to locate on this southern side where views from the reservoir, views of the reservoir are more critical. And then transitioning to the, the largest of the units that are proposed, this is layout E. And it, it reflects the fourth color scheme proposed. As illustrated, eight of the 10 apartments on this one face the front. You see on the left and right side elevations, there's a traditional side. And then on the left side, you have two, two entrances that face this, this elevation. And you see how the materials wrap more around this, actually the left elevation that, that also works as a building front for both of these units. And again, there's a mix of two-car and single-car garages proposed within, within this development. Layout E is the largest. It's 162 feet long and nearly 47 feet tall. And it is proposed, as I mentioned earlier, kind of in this north-south configuration, just, just east of the, the main primary north-south access that goes through this site. So they are staggered a little bit. And then the other benefit to the way that they orient these, these units is that garage unit faces east on, on this location. And then it faces west generally. They're alternating back and forth. So here you see the garage unit facing west and here you see it facing east and the same down, down south here. And then they're staggered. They have separation within these open spaces and otherwise they're separated by fairly wide alleys to get access in and out of each unit's garages. So that's the, or this is the color scheme proposed for this last, last one. It's a black brick, off-white lap siding, and then black lap siding, complemented by a gray shingle. Each of the units also has unique accents for the front doors, which we didn't go through specifically, but they're shown here. So whenever two doors are next to each other, they have two different distinct colors. And then the garages on the rear elevations also have two different colors. They're not necessarily distinct when they're side by side for the garages, however. And then getting into the architecture of the clubhouse, this is kind of a blend of the materials that are proposed. This is the clubhouse and leasing center, excuse me. So this is the west elevation. So the leasing center has been oriented to face the reservoir and you kind of come around to the south to get in to the leasing center. This is that south elevation. You see the front doors of the leasing center here. And what you're seeing is a longer clubhouse elevation. It looks like it's one unit, but they're technically separated by this opening that you see here. And again, the north elevation, the east elevation, this is what you see from coming down one of the roadways within the development. And this is what you see from the east. Like this is the pool area within here. So you see the generous windows that look out onto the pool from the clubhouse area. Those are these windows here. So the color and material plan sheet for the clubhouse has four basic elements that they've borrowed from, or three, excuse me, from the, from the other color schemes proposed for the apartments. The new element is this wood, wood stain color that's used for the columns around the entryways. All the roofing proposed within the development is this brown shingle, which is consistent throughout. So again, there's three elements in this proposal. Staff's got them separated out and the order of this application is a little different than how we do other applications, but because this is an unplatted piece of land, possibly the only unplatted parcel within town limits, certainly the only unplatted parcel within Rock Creek, it was important to get it platted. And then the legal descriptions are consistent between the rezoning application and the final plat site plan. So that's why it's sequenced the way it is. But staff's recommending approval of the subdivision plat. And most of these conditions concern just sequencing and minor technical corrections, which you traditionally see. There was one element of the plat sheet related to the acquisition of the parcel to the north, which is what they're using to get access to their site. They had achieved this from CDON through an access easement, but, or an access permit, excuse me. But now the town's project of 88th Street, CDOT's just decided to dedicate that land to the town. So the town's going through the process of acquiring that land and has gotten consent from CDOT to, to acquire it. It's in the process. So that permit that they had obtained for this right-of-way access is no longer necessary. And it shouldn't be shown on this plat. That's the main reason for the note. And then the second portion of this application is that rezoning. So this, this meets criteria requirements and the rezoning must be adopted before the final plat site plan become, can become effective. But this is written incorrectly. So I apologize. The plat will come first, the rezoning will come second, and then the final plat site plan will occur. And then lastly, the final plat site plan is recommended for approval. It has the same kind of sequencing conditions. And then the applicant needs to coordinate with staff, their construction and phasing. But the anticipation is that staff's work on 88, or the town's work on 88th Street will be done and that northern access will be attainable prior to the time they need it. They don't need it when they first start construction. So that concludes my presentation. I have other slides to discuss other things, but I'll open it up for questions now and I'll stop my screen share.
Thank you, Stephen. Hey, before we get into questions, I, I wouldn't mind, I just want to take a minute. We have so many participants that are listening. We're about to ask questions specific to what we're responsible for tonight. And I just want to make sure the public understands just clearly what we're, what we're doing tonight so they understand the questions where we are asking and why we might not be asking other questions. So Stephen did a great job of communicating. I just want to reiterate it, you know, that we're, we're reviewing a final plat, final development plat, a zoning application tonight. And so the planning commission's only responsibility here is to make sure that this application meets the applicable criteria defined in our land use code, our chapter 16 land use code. Part of that is whether the rezoning farthers the goals and policies of our, of our comprehend, of our comprehensive plan. So, and I just want to clarify a few things just from the, the comments that were emailed to us so everybody understands a little bit more about the application, that, that this application is from a, it's from a private property owner. So the town is superior, doesn't, doesn't own this. The town is superior, isn't developing, developing this land. This is, this is an application from a private property owner who's wanting to do, wanting to develop the land. You heard the Hodgson Harris reservoir is owned and managed by Boulder County. That's been mentioned a couple of times. And that, that this, the, the property is currently zoned under the Rock Creek PD as regional activity and employment center. And, you know, it's intended primarily as focal points for highway, airport, airport and regional services, activities, employment, and secondarily as service centers for the surrounding community. So, and then the applicant is requesting a change to make this residential. So, so anyway, just as we start asking questions, you know, it'll be around those, those things for which we're responsible for. So with that, I'll open, open this up for, for questions. This isn't a time, you know, for, for comment or position statements at this point from the planning commission, mostly just questions for, for staff.
And if I could, if I could chime in too, chairman McCall, just kind of building off of what you were pointing out, the municipal code, the town code specifically provides the criteria that, that the commission needs to consider for each one of, each portion of this application. There's the final plat. Stephen, do you, do you have the, the code provisions on one of the slides?
I do.
Sure. So, so just for, for clarification. So, so the final plat, the, the town code specifically requires that the planning commission is bound to consider this, this criteria in 16850B, which is that the preliminary and final plat shall be reviewed for conformity with this chapter in the comprehensive plan as Chairman McColl pointed out. Then in terms of reviewing the final plat site plan, the, the planning commission is looking at the criteria in 161040B and then rezoning also the, this particular criteria that's from the code. So, so just kind of in, in some, these are the provisions that the, the planning commission is required by the code to consider, you know, in, in each portion of this application. And any type of approval or denial would be couched in, in these terms. So just kind of for, for clarification for, for the commission.
I, I, the only other thing that's, that I know seems a little bit odd. I think I'm getting it, but you know, the final plat, the final development plat, final plat site plan, you know, being approved before the rezoning seems a little off because, you know, we haven't approved zoning for that. But it, that actually won't happen, correct? Unless all three pieces are approved, right? So things.
Right. So I should have clarified that better in, in terms of how, I mean, it, it's sequenced that way, but the applicant, you know, they don't, they're not interested in a partial approval. You either approve everything. It's, this is all a very cohesive application where, you know, we wouldn't want this area subdivided for the use unless the use is actually, the use that they're proposing is actually going to occur. So.
Okay. And if it's okay with the planning commissioners, you, you're all up on my screen. I'm just going to go through in order just for first round. And then after that, if you guys want to jump in. So Ben, why don't we start with you? And if you have any questions or Stephen? None? Okay.
No questions.
Okay. Commissioner, wait, Steve?
No questions.
Yeah, Commissioner Malia, you're next on my screen.
Thanks, Chairman McColl. Stephen, thank you for your presentation and all your information, as well as Dan for that direction. At this point, I don't have any questions, but thank you.
And Commissioner Reese, Jason, you're up. And Commissioner Ritchie, you're next.
I have no questions at this time.
Commissioner Ritchie, you're up. And Commissioner Stewart, you're next.
Yeah, hey, thanks. I do have a few questions. Either it wasn't shown on the pages I was looking at, and maybe this is more of a question for Alex, but the connectivity across 88th Street. So there's a, a pretty good trail connection just to the south of Weldona. And it looks like from the south side of the development for the application we're considering, there's a pedestrian connection. I can't quite tell, doesn't look like it's, maybe it's just not shown for the off-site connection there. But I'm wondering, from a crossing 88th perspective, I feel like we potentially are going to have folks from existing homes wanting to access that new trail network as well as vice versa for the folks in, in this development. And so I know we've got the, the Rapid Beacon at the Roundabout, but that's, you know, that's quite a bit south. And so wondering what your thoughts are for connectivity across 88th.
Okay. Trustee Ritchie, this is Alex. I assume you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So we, as part of the 88th improvements, we're going to be adding a pedestrian refuge just south of the south access, which will have rectangular rapid flashing beacon at that point. Also going up to promenade. In the future, there'll be a traffic signal at that point. The existing pedestrian signals will stay in place, at least for the interim until that promenade is, is extended to that location.
Okay.
So there'll be three, three points to cross 88, down by the ground about, just south of the south axis, and then up by the north axis.
Okay. My next question, I think, is maybe for the environmental consultant. I know in the, I know that's a significant concern. I know that's a significant concern for, for residents, you know, as far as the impact to this development on the migratory birds and the other wildlife that frequent the area. And a little bit of a disclaimer, I back up to the property, back up to 88th on the other side, but I can review this, you know, with, not letting that influence my judgment overall, but knowing the area, knowing how many birds. My question though specifically is around the trail connection, and I just want to hear on record, I guess, that, you know, the report states, while the trail does increase use and kind of impact to those birds, and is it your opinion that that's better because it potentially keeps visitors to the site contained, rather than having them venture out and then kind of further into the site and potentially impacting that? So I'm not sure if, if you would want to kind of clarify or confirm that statement.
So Commissioner Ritchie, you're directing that towards the town's consultant, is that correct?
Yeah, that was, unless somebody else wants to jump in that feels, you know, better about answering that, yeah.
I'm happy to take a stab at it, but Rebecca is here, if she is on, I'll let her, there's a lot of people on here, so.
She just-
Oh, there she is, alright.
Like if you could just-
Yeah.
For the record, and then, go ahead.
Yeah, so my name's Rebecca Hannan, I'm a biologist with Smith Environmental and Engineering, we're supporting the town on this effort. And, yeah, we've, we've looked at the trail and it, it was my opinion that, well, my professional opinion, that having a trail or some means of, of access for people to kind of use the area for recreation is, in the long run, going to be beneficial, just because otherwise people do what they do. And when they see a pretty area and they've got dogs, dogs is a very significant concern, especially with the waterfowl in the area. So it, it was our opinion that having that means of access there would actually reduce the potential for impacts on, on the environmental resources.
And I guess one more follow-up on that, and maybe, you know, this will come up later, but I know your report also said, you know, there's no kind of established best practice minimum for a buffer, but in your opinion, how much, I mean, do you have a sense of, you know, kind of a gauge on how much impact this development will have on the, the wildlife and birds on the, on the reservoir?
Um, yeah, there, there isn't a, a specific set standard, 100 feet is, is a number that I've seen in, in some pieces of literature, so I think that that's not a bad place to start, especially if you have a good amount of vegetation there, and it's proposed to have natural vegetation as, as a buffer along that open space parcel. So I think that's a good spot, I know there is a pinch point by the pool, there's concerns about that, but you guys can talk about that later, I believe. But in terms of, of how this is going to impact birds and other wildlife in the area, it, it's, it's hard to say for certain what's going to occur there, but what we are using as kind of some evidence is that we have the other development on the other side of the reservoir, and you're still seeing throughout the year, especially the breeding season, a lot of waterfowl are continuing to come to this area and to use it even with half of the buffer distance between the buildings and the edge of water on that side.
Hmm, that's a good point of reference, that's helpful information, thank you. My next question is kind of random, but I'm wondering on the, the sound wall design, is it the same as lanterns, are we trying to match, or is this a unique design?
It's the same as far as I recall, Alex might chime in and confirm, but, you know, the sound wall designs, I think they're both done by the same firm even. So it extends, it's not as easy to see here, and it's not nearly that far, but it starts, can you see my screen still, or am I not sharing?
No, we're not sharing right now.
I'll, I keep going back and forth, sorry, I'll share it again. So it's just on this side of Track B, so the detention pond is, is shown here, and then the sound wall is shown, kind of wrapping around here and extending up almost even with Building 13. So it's 445 feet in length and 12 feet high, and we can pull up additional details on these other sheet if you, you want to see it.
I was just curious, just to see if the design was the same. And then one last question right now for staff, and wondering, there's two eliminated monument signs that are proposed, and wondering if there's been any conversations, or I didn't notice any notes, that that would need to be turned off once you hit a certain time of night, or, you know, or if we verified the lighting output that would be associated with the monument sign.
We can put that condition in, it's, it hasn't been something that we've discussed with them yet, and I did comment on the signs and the style of signs, the type of metal, and I haven't heard back from them yet, I'm expecting that recent metal. We just decided, because the application was posted, and we had scheduled everything for the March meeting, that we would leave this middle as is, so their responses to those comments are still pending.
Yeah, from a design perspective, I, I like your idea, I don't know that it necessarily needs to match, sorry, my dog's barking in the background, if you guys can hear that. But I think the illumination is something that we should certainly consider hours where it gets turned off, and maybe even, you know, kind of downlit external illumination if that was going to be pretty bright.
Okay, I'll take a closer look at it.
Commissioner Stewart, you're up, and Commissioner Harden, you're next.
Great, well, thank you Stephen, that's a great presentation as always, and, you know, thank you for the information, like Commissioner Malia's had in the guidance here. I think you kind of get lost in the size and scope of a project like this, and there are a lot of things going on. So I, I just had a couple questions related to what we've seen thus far, and the first question that I have is related to parking in driveways or additional parking spaces throughout the complex, what those will look like. And I thought that I saw a reference to parking spaces, but it wasn't necessarily addressed. How are they going to deal with the issue of parking in that complex? And are there sufficient spaces to cover the number of units that are being proposed?
Yeah, I think the applicant has a slide on this as well, but there's a table on the cover sheet of the plan that clarifies how many. The plan sheet will clarify where, but their, their requirement is to park three bedroom units at 2.5 spaces per unit, so they need 450 spaces, or a total of 495 when you include their guest parking that's required. The total parking provided is, and excess of that, part of that is that additional open space parking, but they are compliant, so when you see the, the one car garage space, there's a dedicated surface parking space to, to get them up, and even the two car garages, they need a half a space for every two units in order to accommodate the surface parking. And in addition to just kind of clarifying that they're compliant with the Rock Creek standards, these are, you know, 30-year-old standards, we do have lesser restrictions in other areas in terms of parking, so staff feels that the, the proposed parking design is adequate.
Okay, thank you. In the second, in the past developments such as this have shown plans for snow storage, and one of the concerns might be that storage will run into the reservoir, and is there adequate space for snow storage that was mentioned, or did I miss that?
There is snow storage, I think they're on different plan sheets, your, your comment is a good one on the snow storage and the drainage to the reservoir, so there was some snow area, I think, right just south of this parking area, and if you look at the utility design sheet, there's a, an underground drain that drains out across 88th Street to this pond over here west of 88th. And so we, one of the directions and corrections would be for them to relocate their storage so that it doesn't drain, it doesn't have a chance of draining into the reservoir, and is assured to drain towards this, this pond, so that, that wasn't addressed or wasn't reflected properly in their last submittal, and it will be reflected. But in general, snow storage is something that gets reviewed with every application. This one's more sensitive because of the reservoir, drainage in general, just more sensitive around this property, but we did look at that closely and were satisfied with the design.
Okay, well, thank you, that's all I have for now.
Commissioner Harden, Phyllis, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
And Commissioner Harper, you're, you're up.
I have no questions either.
All right, so with that, I'll do another round, did I miss anybody? I think I got everyone. All right, if anybody has anything else for Stephen, just unmute yourself and speak up.
And you can always ask me more questions after the applicant's presentation as well.
Okay. All right, so that's it for staff, we have an applicant presentation next, I assume?
Yeah, and I'm going to allow them to share their screen and then turn it over to the app, I think Dennis is going to start the, the presentation, but Allison may be in charge here.
And as you, as you come, come up to present, if you could just introduce yourself and who you're with for the record, that would be great.
Can you see my screen?
We can.
Yes.
Hi, this is Diana, I think Dennis was going to start, Dennis, you might be muted, unmuted.
Can you hear me?
We can now, yes.
Okay. Okay, this is Dennis Cavallari, I am the developer, hold on, I think I've got to press a button here. Okay. And I'm the developer with Cavallari Group, and my partner is Steel Wave. I'd like, I'd like to begin by thanking the town staff for all their time and energy they've devoted to reviewing our proposed past few years, and I'd also like to thank the planning commission for your time in the focused review of this project. I've personally developed, attached multifamily for sale and for rent over the past 30 years in the state of Colorado, Kansas, and on both coasts. The subject site was chosen because of the quality of the schools, locate, the close proximity to a number of employment centers, the visibility to Highway 36, and the ability to create an undisturbed natural walkway park amenity adjacent to the reservoir. This, as everybody knows, and I'm going to repeat myself, repeat the, the little bit of what Stephen said, and I'm sorry, as we know, the 23-acre site is currently zoned RAC, Regional Activity Center, and it allows for a maximum height of 120 feet for a number of commercial uses. Our request is to downzone, downzone this intensity of use. By way of comparison, the current allowable zoning would potentially increase traffic trip generation from 147 to 369% at the low end of office development, and 794% to 1,595% more traffic on the high end of the current zoning. By comparison, our proposed townhouse project, and I would like to add at this point, this is a townhouse project, and even though it is a rental townhouse project, is, as you, everybody is seeing it from Stephen's presentation, the units are large, they range from 1,400 square feet to 1,800 square feet. Our project is very low density and offers a minimal impact to the existing community, along with providing great public benefit. The project offers the best community benefits with a lower density residential use versus the current high-density office development zoning and its associated high traffic. We will open, we will open to the public what is now a private inaccessible parcel of land through the large open space dedication and the creation of the waterfront nature trail and its associated public parking. The public benefit is undeniable, as seen through the rear dedication of public land use adjacent to the reservoir, along with the assistance in widening 88 to create unabated traffic flow and removal of the overhead power lines. Thank you for our opportunity to present tonight, we look forward to all your questions. Turn it over to Diana.
Okay, great, thank you. So for the record, Diana Rayel from Norris Design, we're located at 1101 Bannock Street, Denver, Colorado, 80204. And along with me tonight are several consultants, we have a fairly large team, this is a very complex project, so there's a few of us on the phone, I want to make some introductions, I'm sure you'll hear from some of them throughout this presentation in order to address items or answer questions. So you met Dennis from Cavallari and partner with Steel Wave, also with Cavallari tonight is Paul Giovinetti, along with me at Norris Design, our, and we're, by the way, we're planners and landscape architects, so we both do the entitlements and the landscape design for the project. I have my partner Jared Carlin on for landscape, Allison Wenland is on the phone, and she's actually driving the screen, so she's going to do, Allison, maybe you could go to the next slide on this one. She's going to try to keep up with my words, I suppose, and then we also have Greg Banks on the phone with us, who was kind of in the weeds on the landscape side of the project. Architecture is represented by, we, it looks like we're having problems getting to the-
Okay.
Okay. I'm, I'm sure we'll work through all the glitches as we go. Architecture is represented by KTGY, and we have Terry Willis and Rachel Keven on the phone, I think Rachel's going to make a presentation on architecture after I am kind of through the site plan information. Our civil engineer is R&amp;R, and Cliff Dayton is on the phone. Traffic is represented by STS, Joe Henderson's on the phone. Environmental represented by ERO, so we have Ron Bean, and then our lighting photometric is studio lighting, and Jacob Bennefield is on the phone as well. If I've missed anyone, please forgive me, and if you have something to say, just chime in, hopefully I-
Diana, just, just to, this is Commissioner McCool, just to minimize my disruptions, if there are going to be multiple people chiming in, the first time they chime in, if they could introduce themselves with their first name, last name, and who they're with, and then if, if conversations change, if they could just state your first name and last name for the record, so we know who's talking, please.
Okay, perfect, great, great reminder. So this team has been working essentially for just a little over four years now, we've, we sort of had a two-part process, which I can, I'll explain kind of in a future slide, but initially we started with working sessions with the town board and then public outreach, and then we went into the submittal process with the city staff, review, response, resubmit, review, response, resubmit, and with those technical comments that Stephen's mentioned several times, the conditions, we would be cleaning up those technical items and making our seventh submittal here, right between planning commission, this meeting, and then our town board meeting, so hopefully that makes things a little clearer as to where we are in the process. Let's go to the site plan, Allison, next page, and I think I can answer several of the questions from Commissioner Ritchie and Commissioner Stewart on this slide here. First, I want to kind of walk around the plan, this is, this is an illustrative plan that we prepared, it, it's a little different view from what Stephen showed you in that kind of technical black and white plans in the packets that you received, because it shows really that open space network and the building configurations, as well as sidewalks and vehicular circulation and access. So one, one thing I, I think Stephen did a great job of kind of explaining the total size of the project at just over, you know, 23.6 acres in total, but what the project really does is a good job at essentially buffering itself from the perimeter, so along the south of the project, we have Track A, which buffers us from the reservoir, we have Track B, the detention pond buffering us from US 36, and then the Vera reservoir, which is Track C, that wetland area that Allison is circling there, buffers us as well from 36. Along south 88th Street, we have a 40-foot setback, we're able to have a 10-foot multi-use trail there, as Stephen mentioned, and we have a great change there. and we have a grade change there. So essentially, one thing you saw in the architecture of those buildings there, those step from three stories to two stories. But actually, as far as grade goes, they sit down a full story from 88th because of a grade change across the site. So from a transition of density and self kind of self buffering and protecting the project from the perimeter, there is also a change, grade change there that helps to provide that buffer. Access points to the north at Promenade Drive, as Alex mentioned, that will be a signalized intersection. So there'll be opportunity for pedestrian crossing located there along 88th Street. And then to the south, the south access. As you can see, just south of that, there is a pedestrian crossing at that location, right by the red, right by the trail system on the west side of South 88th. So I'm hoping that answers Commissioner Ritchie, your question about where are you going to be able to cross? Also, right there where your cursor is, Allison is, we're kind of ahead of the game on this plan, but we went ahead and reduced the size of that trailhead parking lot. So you can see this is the smaller version. And along with that, there is a snow push area on the west side of that for snow storage, which will then be what's the word, conveyed to the west side across 88th Street to the pond that you see just off the edge there. So I think that answers maybe Commissioner Stewart's question about parking, snow storage addresses that area here. I want to touch on parking. As you can see on the site data chart here, we have 180 units. We are required by code to have 495 spaces for parking. The plan has a total residential parking of 495 plus. We have 12 parking spaces within that open space area for the trailhead along the reservoir and an additional 66 tandem spaces. So those are spaces that essentially are right behind the parking garages for the for the units themselves. So in total, we're at 573, which is a parking ratio of 3.2 parking spaces per unit. Generally, a typical suburban project like this would typically be parked around two or 2.2 parking spaces per unit. So we're far in excess of what we would typically see in the market. And I think that because you know, this is, again, it's a higher-end project, as Dennis mentioned, bigger units, the rents are high. We're figuring probably folks will have potentially more cars, but we can accommodate them with that type of a parking ratio. So again, I think that was a Commissioner Stewart question. One thing I wanted to touch on too is the trail along the reservoir. As you can see in this area, we have hugged that trail adjacent to the units that face the reservoir, so it's much closer. And it will also contain, will also have a fence along that edge between the sidewalk and the reservoir so that it protects. Again, as Rebecca mentioned, it's kind of protects the pedestrians. There will also be signage that says, you know, do not enter, this is a protected area, it is sensitive environment. And we, I think we had a recommendation, a condition of approval to add pet mesh to that fence so that if you are walking a dog, you wouldn't be able to allow your dog to run through that area off-leash or in the instance that your dog got free. So we agree with that condition, and we can add that provision as well to that area. See if I've covered everything here. The, I want to touch on the monument question as well, real quick while we're on this page. Any monuments, the monuments that we would propose will have a full cutoff indirect lighting or either either full cutoff lighting or internally lit illuminated cabinets. So there wouldn't be any lighting that would be sort of nuisance lighting as created by those monuments. So we're very sensitive to dark sky and those provisions within the city code or town code. Wanted to also talk about just the kind of the way that the open space is situated. You've seen the Triangle Park, which is in the center of the project, and many of those units face that park, which is a great amenity. If you're not looking at the reservoir or along the open space along, say, 88th Street, you have that Central Park area, but the internal units kind of where your cursor is, Allison. We've worked extremely hard to create excellent pedestrian corridors for folks that if you live along 88th, there are areas to pop through a little quad and get to that park easily. So there's areas where the the rest, the pedestrian network percolates through this project, and it's very park-like. It's more like a, almost like a campus master plan to create areas for residents to really take those color-concreted crosswalks, make your way through a quad, and then into the park area to enjoy that. That area is almost three quarters of an acre and is highly programmed. We'll zoom in on that in a minute as well. I think one last thing I wanted to note, we have approximately five residential buildings, four residential buildings and the club leasing center that front along the reservoir. And the project to our south, Saddle Brook, actually has six total buildings. So from a kind of apples-to-apples comparison, we are very consistent. However, I think our two and three-story staggered buildings are a little more transitional as far as the height goes, giving some softer edges transitioning those perimeter building corridors and trying to kind of lower the overall building edge along the reservoir. So for, let's go to the next slide. I want to talk a little bit about parks, the park amenities and the club, pool, and leasing center. There are many large, well-designed outdoor spaces, as I mentioned, that help residents kind of percolate through the project and into the center. The pool, this is a, as you can see from this picture, this is a resort-style pool. This deck includes a, an affinity edge, a spa with cabanas and an outdoor kitchen that will include grills, duck chairs, and very sort of resort-like amenity here. One thing I wanted to point out along this area is that I think Rebecca mentioned that the edge of this pool building is close to 100 feet from the reservoir. There's a portion of the reservoir that has sort of a little like cove area from the grading that gets a little close to this. One thing I want to point out, yep, right there where Allison's cursor is, is that in a flat view, you would see the pool and think that it's just sitting right on top of the reservoir. However, there is a significant grade change, and as you can see here in the next graphic, that there is a series of retaining walls that separate, that really separate the pedestrian trail, which in this picture is right under the the label pool, you can see where the trail goes by. And then you can see that there's two, two levels of retaining walls here that really lift up that amenity and create separation between pedestrians that are using that that trail as well as, and then the pedestrians and residents that are using the pool amenity. So I wanted to just point that out as well. The trail also includes not just a trail, but a boardwalk. Early on in the project and back in 2016, we did sort of a visioning. I call it dotocracy, where we put a lot of graphics up and people, the town trustees and the public really like the aesthetic of having a boardwalk. And so we've been able to maintain that element and keep that along the edge of the reservoir for sort of just a different textural feel along there. And then the next slide I wanted to show you is the larger, the park, which, as I mentioned, is just shy of three quarters of an acre. It's, everyone's calling it the Triangle Park. But as you can see, there's a playground, an area for grilling, a large shelter, and a significant great lawn. It's an area where people can throw a frisbee, you can have movies in the park, you can have food trucks pull up next door or even in the space and kind of do festivals in this area. It's really an area that we think the residents are going to love to enjoy and spend a lot of time in. So overall, we have much more landscape. We have those small quad areas that, again, all connected from the perimeter buildings to the central buildings that focus on this Triangle Park. I think the next slide, let's go to I want to talk a little history just about kind of the process as we've gone through it. As I mentioned, we started in 2016. We really started with outreach to the town trustees and town staff. And we've got a lot of advice. The project essentially at that point started with 273 total units on the site. The first we had up to, we had essentially four meetings with the town trustees throughout the early part of the process. And over that time, getting feedback, we showed options with commercial, we showed options with a variety of different uses. We looked at options with higher-density, single-family. And throughout that period of time, everything kind of seemed to come back and gel with the concept that you see before you tonight. So again, as I mentioned, four trustee work sessions, we had two community open houses and town hall meetings as well. And that all led up to the very first submittal, which was on, was in January, early January 2018. And so essentially, a little over two years, we've been going back and forth with staff on submittals, revisions. And at the third submittal is when we ended up landing on the 180 total units. We made the sixth submittal on March 11th. And as I mentioned, we'll be making another technical submittal here between this meeting and the town board trustee meeting. Many concessions were made, as I mentioned, typically 270, you know, three units. That would be a higher density. We're, we're at a density now 7.6 dense dwelling units to the acre. This is a very low density when considering even a townhome project, which you would see as typically a 12 dwelling units to the acre in that range. We haven't really touched on the open space network, but essentially 54% of the project is in open space. The town, the Rock Creek PD requires 45%. So we're in excess of that provision, and we are dedicating almost four acres along that south edge as well as one acre along 88th Street in order to improve the 88th Street corridor. So Allison, if you can advance to the next slide. This is what 88th Street will look like. So here's a view. We're on the west side of 88th Street, looking north at that edge. The current 88th Street is 70 foot of right-of-way. The project will dedicate another 27 to 37 feet. As Stephen mentioned, there's sort of a notch in the right-of-way about halfway through there that we will be dedicating that extra 10 feet to get to a total of 102 feet of right-of-way. In the end, there will be a 50-foot road pavement section that allows for two lanes of traffic, one north, one south, a painted median. And then you've got, as we mentioned, the 10-foot multi-use trail on the east side. You can see the tree lawn on the east edge, along with that multi-use trail for bike commuters and students that can, students from Monarch High School can take advantage of that as well. Let's see. I think we're going to transition to architecture at this point with Rachel Keven, and then at the end, we have a video for you that we want to play. That's a 3D model of the site, and I will do my best to narrate it as we go through there. So Rachel, if you want to jump in at this point?
Yes. So as Diana said, my name is Rachel Keven. I'm an architect at KTGY Architecture and Planning. It's really exciting to be able to present to you. I've been able to work on this project from the beginning. So I'm just really happy to be at this point. I think Stephen, Diana, and Dennis really touched on the majority of the things I would want to talk about, but I just wanted to talk on two points really quickly before we start the video. The first point being really the inspiration for the building design, and that being taken from Chautauqua Park up in Boulder and looking at the cabins up there. For this slide, we're just calling out some of those features that we have taken from those buildings and incorporated them into our buildings. So those consist of both the gable and shed roofs, and then also some low-sloped roofs. You'll see the white trim elements on all six of those images from Chautauqua, and we've incorporated those as window trim, roof eaves, and fascia throughout the project. Also, the materials are consistent with what is seen at Chautauqua with siding, shingle, brick, and stone materials. And then lastly, a little bit more of the detail elements with mission-style doors and lighting features and the brackets at entryways. So all those, while our buildings are a little bit larger, of course, than the cabins at Chautauqua, we are taking the elements from there. Allison, if you could go to the next page. And then just the other thing I wanted to talk about that Stephen did cover is we are proposing four different material schemes. And so we've got either brick or stone in each scheme with a colored shingle and then the white siding that is consistent throughout to help create a cohesiveness throughout the project. And then also, like Stephen mentioned, each color scheme has a unique set of door colors. And so those are the really, the couple architectural points I wanted to bring up. And then if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them after this. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Rachel. So now we would like to walk through the video. It is, we we tested it earlier. It's a little bit glitchy. We'll turn the noise, there is sound in the background, but we'll turn that down in hopes to narrate a little bit of what you're seeing along the way.
Can I bring through the screen?
Yep.
Let's see. Yeah.
All right.
Okay. So this is a view, we're looking west across 36 at the project. You can see the trail, you can see the wall along 36, the Central Park and the wetland area. This is kind of looking from the south from the reservoir. You can see the change in grade from the houses. You can see how the units step. This is the club and pool. It's going really fast. This is along 88th. You can see how those common areas connect to the Triangle Park. And then the 88th corridor. The Triangle Park with the shelter, playground, orchard areas, and then the great lawn. And there you have it. So in conclusion, our team is available to answer any questions. We want to thank staff for more than four years of dedication, hard work, working side by side with us, rolling up your sleeves, and we are continue to do so, making an effort to push to to push to town board trustees. And we wanted to say that we are in agreement with the conditions of approval. And we want to thank the commission for your time tonight. And we look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Commissioners, I'll do the same thing. I'll just start with how you're up here on my screen. And Commissioner Miller, you're first. Commissioner Witty, you're after that.
No questions.
No questions. Hey, Commissioner Witty, you're up. Commissioner Malia, you're next.
No questions at this point.
All right. Mr. Malia is up. Commissioner Reese, you're next.
Thank you all for your presentation. That was wonderful and your diligence in working with us for so long. I don't have any questions for you at this time, but I think the project looks absolutely beautiful. Thank you for all your hard work.
Commissioner Reese, you're up. Commissioner Ritchie, you're next.
All right. So I do have quite a few questions and wanted to reiterate what others have said. I think the design and perseverance through the whole process and everything has turned out quite a great product. I do have quite a few questions. And first of all, the ADA accessible apartments, I think, great, great job with those. And I really like the fact that six of the 18 front the reservoir. It helps drop the roof lines, as you said. I'm just wondering if there's any possible way to add more of those. And then also, how will those be regulated? What's the, you know, what's the concept behind that? And then how do you make it into a reality? People need to, will get those. And I can, I'll just, do you want me to just stop after each question, let them be answered? If I do the best.
Yeah. And if the respondent could just identify themselves when they respond.
So Rachel, do you want to field that one? Or is that best for?
Yeah. I can start. So Rachel Keven and Dennis will probably have to answer more how units get divvied up based on residents and applicants. But I think really, we've, what we've got now is 18 first floor units. I'm not sure that we would be able to at this point increase those because of the way that those garages work is really how the site works so that we are hiding garages from the edges and the perimeter of the site as much as possible in the way the street system works out. But we are providing 18 of those units. And then there's also 18 units that stack above those single level apartments that are single level living, though you would have to walk upstairs to get to that second level.
Okay. And yeah, I don't know if anybody has an answer for how you regulate it or, you know, manage the whole process for people of need that, you know, would be taking those ADAs, leasing those.
Dennis, do you have a response on that?
Yeah, I don't. Can you hear me, Stephen?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. When it comes to ADA units, it's more challenging to, to regulate. You can't hold them off, off the market because you don't know if you're ever going to get anybody to lease them. But it's kind of on a first come, first served basis. And it's about the best you can do. We've got a professional management company that's onsite constantly, you know, every day of the week. And we would advertise for the ADA units and hopefully would get a positive response from the ADA community, the tenant base ADA community.
Okay. And one, the reason I was asking is that, you know, we get a lot of response from seniors that live in larger houses and, and Rock Creek and around the community who are looking, you know, they were just hoping that we would wind up at some point getting some ranches built within Superior so that they could move in. And I think this is a great option for people who are looking for that. And of course, it's a rental versus purchasing. But I think these provide an option for those people. And I was wondering if it was restricted to, you know, people of need or if it's, you know, so that answers that. Appreciate that.
No, not at all. As a matter of fact, you actually touched on something that was part of our concept design. We really wanted the flats to address the needs of the senior community. So that was a big intention of ours, was to incorporate some flats in here a percentage so that we could attract the senior community, you know, people who, as you mentioned, want to sell their homes, you know, live in a, you know, a stress-free environment where they don't have to maintain their own grounds, et cetera. So you've actually touched upon part of our design concept.
I was, I think that was actually one of the things that came out of one of our four workshops with the town trustees. Being able to accommodate that single level living, essentially.
Yeah, perfect. And then.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Reese, if I can piggyback on that real quick. That was one of my questions for later. I was wondering if we could get a look at those units specifically again and where they're located throughout the complex.
We could, Rachel.
I can show it.
Yeah, Stephen, you might be able to.
So every, can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
So every unit that's shaded in gray. So they're pretty well distributed. So you have one, two, three, four, five, six units located within or along the reservoir. You have an additional six units around the Triangle Park, and then six units along 88th Street. So they might be able to describe a little bit more. There's a, there's two different types. There's the type A unit and the type B unit. And you guys have had some familiarity with how that point system works. But your type B unit is a higher level ADA accessible unit. And then the type B unit, if I'm remembering correctly, is the visitable unit versus, you know, meeting the higher standard. So there's a certain point system based on the number of overall units proposed, and they do meet that requirement. And I think that how they do that is on the cover sheet. So, but your question was really limited to where those units are located. So I might be going further than you need to understand. You have additional questions on the ADA that you want me to address? Or was that sufficient?
I don't. That was, I just wanted to know where they were located throughout the complex and how they were distributed.
So, and then the other thing, as always, we're looking at how that, how that access works throughout that site so that you, you know, we ensure that that ADA access gets you back out to the street, gets you to the leasing area, the clubhouse, gets you to all the amenities that are proposed. And then actually, you know, you can circulate through the site as well. So even to the point of getting you to, you know, your trash enclosure, recycling area. So that's what's reflected in red on this plan sheet is the ADA accessibility blocks.
All right. And so I guess Diana, maybe I want to answer the next three. But so you had mentioned, and you brought up a good point, and we were talking about parking, that you guys far exceed the required parking requirements. And based on the price point of the leasing, that it may end up requiring more people to live in a, in a single unit. And that way that the parking is available for them. I was trying to balance between what you were saying is, you know, you could have gone with a higher density development, which would have required more parking anyways. But we've gone, you've gone, you're presenting a lower density development, which is great. But then if you're looking at, and you're still bringing in the same number of people that you would have done with a high.
Your audio is breaking up a little, Jason. You may want to repeat that last part, or at least it's breaking up for me.
I think what he's saying is we're doing lower density, maybe more bedrooms because we have the three bedroom units. But even in a higher density project, and Dennis, you're probably the better master at describing this, but even in a higher density multifamily traditional, say, three-story walk-up project, you're going to get a handful of three-story, sorry, three-bedroom units in that mix. You'll get studios, one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedroom. And we, the 495 required stalls, the code, the town code requires to be parked by bedroom. So we are actually parking to, in excess of what the town code requires as a per bedroom requirement. And that's how the code works. So even above and beyond that, we're going to be an additional, almost 80 or so stalls above that minimum code. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, kind of. I mean, but parking, right? And so if you've got stalls beyond the requirement, what if, if we came back as a town and said, we don't want those, you know, can you cut out 40 of those? Or, you know, what does that impact to your development? That's, I guess that's what my question would be.
Can I jump in? And I don't know if, can people hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner, let me start by saying every unit has a two-car attached garage. There are some units that have what's considered a tandem two-car garage. And town staff specifically wanted us not to use that second space in the parking count. The theory being that, you know, a lot of people may use that for storage, et cetera. But every unit has a two-car attached direct access garage. And the remainder of the parking is located around the site. So I'm a little confused on your question. Is, could give it another shot here, and I'll try and answer it.
Jason, are you asking if there could be more density, if there was fewer parking spaces? Or what are you, or just more open space? I can't hear you.
Yeah, we're losing you.
I think I was understanding this question is, if we think it's overparked, would the applicant be willing to remove some parking spaces?
Yeah, we, absolutely. We'd be willing to remove some parking spaces. And I'll be really candid, the genesis of the, of the high parking count, we virtually have over three spaces per unit. It came about in our, in a workshop in the community with one of the, one of the town board members and talking to some of the people in the community. And this particular town board member who's no longer in the community, she was adamant about a high, high parking count. And, you know, we were willing to address her, her desire and need as she perceived it. So, yeah, we could eliminate parking. That's easy to do.
Yeah, I just, I felt like, I felt like it seemed to be an extreme number of additional parking spots. And maybe it's not. But so that answers my question. I just, I wanted to understand, you know, why the excess in parking. And I didn't know if it was correlating to the fact that you think you're going to be having more drivers per unit because of the price point. So that was kind of my question. We can move on to my next two kind of.
We lost, lost you again, Jason.
I think your video is freezing, and then we dropped your audio at the same time.
Reservoir. But I'm wondering, is that just exterior lighting? Or did that include interior lighting within all of the units? People have their lights on.
Jason, you're going to have to repeat the question. You kind of cut out.
Yeah, figures. So based on lighting, did the lighting study include interior lighting from all the units? Or is it just strictly exterior lighting?
It's strictly exterior lighting.
Okay. So any impact study to the reservoir wildlife was, is based off of the exterior lighting, doesn't include any interior lighting?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, oh, one thing that I'd like to see is the trash receptacle areas, roof, rooftops on them, just to keep any trash that breaks loose and starts, you know, we want to keep it contained so it's not flying away and landing in the reservoir or blowing across 36 or areas like that. So I'd like to see a rooftop with maybe some match around between the roof and the concrete to kind of, if that's possible. And I think staff, you guys asked for the pet mesh on the fences, which is one of the things I'm going to request. And I think that's pretty much all of my questions. I think I have one more, but I'll let everybody else go.
All right, Commissioner Ritchie, and then Commissioner. Hang on, Jason, we've got one more.
Sorry, one last one. And this might be for Diana. Can be at the pool area, how many may be expecting to, or what is the maximum number of people that can be at a pool at one time?
Oh, good question. Jared, are you, do you have an answer to that one?
Can you guys hear me? This is Jared Carlin with Norris Design.
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right. Yeah, it's a good question. I've been working with Greg and the team on the landscape side of things and we're finding the pool deck design. We, I don't have on the tip, I don't have that exact data. We can get you that. But we look at it on occupancy, from an occupancy standpoint, how many people are allowed on the pool deck at a certain time. And we did do early studies in the, early in the project to try to study and kind of manipulated that and evolved it over time with the different unit counts to study the appropriate deck space and chair space around the pool that was sized appropriately on a per unit basis. So we look at that and compare other pools within the market and try to figure out what's appropriate there. But then we're also working within occupancy levels for egress on the pool deck to make sure that those are appropriately designed as well.
Okay.
Hopefully that answered your question.
Yeah, that's, that's good. Thanks.
Hi, Commissioner Ritchie, and then Commissioner Stewart, you're up next.
Great, thank you. Follow up a little bit to a question related to parking. And this has to do with the redesigned parking area for visitors and access to the trail. Your initial parking plan showed more of that parking closer to 88th. And I'm wondering why the remaining portion is closer to the pond and it couldn't be pulled more toward the 88th side, again, to provide a little buffer from the reservoir. So just a comment that I noticed there. I guess you could work with staff on that. I just would encourage you to pull that away to the greatest degree possible. And I venture here, my next question with a little caution, because first of all, I want to just express really great gratitude for you all as applicants. And I'm not sure staff's role in this to provide, you know, some level of affordable housing on this project. You know, this would be the first project in Superior for, that would have any component of affordable housing. And so I really want to express my appreciation and support for that concept. That being said, you know, just a few kind of policy questions as it relates to that. It looks like you're proposing nine units to be affordable. It's roughly 5%. You know, from my perspective, again, I don't want to make my comments sound like, you know, push you too far that you pull this out of your application. But 5% doesn't meet the, you know, town-supported and county-wide housing plan to provide up to 20% affordable housing throughout the county. So, you know, while 5% is great, I don't know that it, well, for one, it doesn't meet that policy. And two, I guess, you know, I'm looking at that a little bit as it relates to, you know, some of these comp plan criterias for expanded opportunities for different housing types. You know, so when we're looking, in my mind, when I'm looking to tie application approval, this is, this is an important thing for me. And, and my other comment on this is, you know, wondering from a management perspective over time, you know, we've heard from Boulder County and work that I do elsewhere, that with a rental product, 60% AMI is really an affordable rate, 80 to 120. You know, once you hit 80, you're, you're pretty much an affordable within this particular region. That may not be, you know, Denver wide, but in Boulder County, at least when Boulder County Housing Authority reviews a product that's rental, they look for a 60% AMI for that to have a meaningful impact. And then my final question on that, is this permanently affordable? Or is this kind of a term associated with the tax structure, you know, a 20-year or 40-year? And what's your guarantee on that? And then finally, you know, is, is this going to be privately managed? You know, how is this guaranteed? And how will this be overseen? And how will this be overseen over time? Is Boulder County, you know, the town doesn't have our own housing authority? We, you know, I'm assuming we would typically work through Boulder County Housing Authority, but how are we going to manage this and guarantee that this remains affordable over time? So a lot in that question, I don't know what you can answer right now, but those are my thoughts on that.
I think I can address pretty much everything. So let's start with, let's see here. You might have to help me. I tried taking notes quickly.
Okay, you started and I know it was, it was really.
That's okay, we'll get, we'll get through it. So let me, let's, let's first get into the genesis of this. I've, I've developed extensively in California. And I'd have to say, every project I've done in California, with maybe the exception of one or two, have always had some sort of inclusionary housing. So I know, I know inclusionary housing extremely well. The problem we're having here is, is that this concept was introduced into this development at the 11th hour, if you will. And most, most projects that have a level of 20% of affordability, especially to 60%, 60% AMI, would be afforded a 35% density bonus. So there's always a give and take with this. You know, because a project doesn't get off the ground if, you know, somebody wants to require, you know, something that's going to bring the yield below what you can finance. So because it was an 11th hour community benefit that I was brought to my attention that, you know, Superior, Boulder County, et cetera, is trying to address some of this need. I would get the numbers and I tried to come up with something that we could live with at this juncture. And at the same time, not have to come back to the town for a density bonus. So that's, that's how we came up with that. As far as permanent affordability, yeah, we would anticipate this is affordable in perpetuity and that the units go up in, in rent escalation according to CHAFAs charts. I don't know if you've seen those. We've take, we've taken the rents right for, CHAFA has, in conjunction with HUD, they've provided rent levels across the whole state of Colorado for every county. And that's what, and that's kind of the matrix upon which we would go from. And we have gone from. We've got a professional management company that manages the property. And I've spoken extensively with the assistant city manager on this. We were going to, we're going to have a, have a report to go into the city, let's say the city manager's office a month basis pursuant to the affordable units. You know, and then maybe after they're leased up, it'd be at a juncture which they become vacant, something like that. But permanent affordability, I'm happy to talk about it further if I've missed some of, some of the answers here.
No, I think that's good. And again, I just, I really appreciate that you are willing to do this. My, my personal perspective is I would be willing to entertain a density bonus, you know, because of this, that's just mine. And I know it's probably, I'm not sure where you are in your overall timeline or, or where other planning commissioners would fall on this. I think my encouragement to you and to staff would be to reach out to Boulder County Housing Authority sooner rather than later, just to see if they have any ideas from an operational and oversight perspective that could assist town staff in how to manage this over time. You know, they, they have those resources. So just a suggestion there. And then again, applaud you for doing it. Where the conversation could advance between now and, and the town board, just would certainly encourage you to do so. And if other commissioners, you know, want to take it further, I'm happy to entertain that, but I'll leave it at that for now.
Points well taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ritchie. Commissioner Stewart?
So thank you, I just have, I think I.
You were, you became muted there, Commissioner Stewart.
Okay, so can you hear me now? Thank you. So thank you for, on this presentation. And personally, I really like this project. There's just a couple of things that I wanted to piggyback on that the other commissioners spoke about. And one being the additional parking. I personally like that because I work with a large number of seniors. And sometimes those seniors live in apartment complexes. And I send caregivers into their homes. And oftentimes, there's not parking for our caregivers. So if we're talking about this number of ADA units, I'm assuming that we're hoping to have those ADA units filled by people who need them. So oftentimes, those people have caregivers. And the additional parking will be good for those caregivers that come to visit. So I'm actually in favor of keeping the additional parking spaces that have been presented tonight. One of the other things is that this is, again, a great project. And I like the color schemes that you've presented to us tonight. But one of the things that I looked at and had questions about was when you have the different color schemes throughout the different units, is it necessary to have the same color roofing throughout the complex? Or is there some way to mix that up? And I'd just like to hear a little bit about maybe the benefits versus the cons of mixing up those rooftop schemes.
Yeah, let me jump in as a developer first. And then happy to bring Rachel in and/or Steven, if either of you guys want to comment further. We'd be open to looking at both options. We, you know, a lot of times, from an aerial view, the, the symmetry that is projected with the same color, a lot of people feel is more pleasing. Like I said, as a developer, we'd be open to changing the roof colors for various buildings or keeping them all the same. Steven or Rachel, if you guys want to comment further, please do.
And maybe if you could just speak to one way or the other. I mean, you said from an aerial perspective, there is a benefit. But is there a negative to mixing that up?
I think it's difficult to see the, you know, if you're pedestrian or in a car or walking, you know, just walking around the trail system, you, you would tend to see a little bit of the roof, but you don't see all of the roof. I, I don't have, I'm, I'm at a loss really. I'll be honest with you, it's the first time I've ever gotten that question. Steven, what, fire away, what do you think?
I think it's dependent upon the size of the project with 22 buildings and the amount of architectural variation you guys have with your colors and your materials already. I don't think it's necessary. I almost feel like the roof, you know, might, the variation might be a distraction more than, you know, it doesn't need to add. This, this development with the details that it has, I don't think it needs an add, so.
This is Diana Ray, I'll chime in too. I think there's so much color variety and building variety on this site that I think it would be just sort of an added, an add that's not necessary. I think at the ground plane, as you're walking as a pedestrian, you're going to see so much variety here, you're never going to even notice the roofs.
And this is Rachel Kevan, just piggybacking on that too. But it also does tie back to the Chautauqua inspiration. And they all have like a dark brown, dark gray roof. So it ties in at that level as well, just to piggyback on what Steven and Diana said.
All right, so that was my impression. And that doesn't necessarily detract from the attractive, attractiveness of this project. And nor does it add anything to switch that up.
It's neutral, right? It's absolutely neutral.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Stewart?
That's all that I have. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Harden, Phyllis, you're up. And then Commissioner Harper, you're next.
No, I don't have any questions at this time.
All right, Commissioner Harper, it's up to you. And then I'll go after you.
Thank you. I have a traffic question, which is that the two junctions north of this development on 88th Street are Campus Drive and Health Park Drive. And then beyond that, Dillon. That's a pretty busy area in the morning because of people taking kids to the high school. Do you anticipate any impact from either the construction project or the permanent residents on those junctions?
This is, this is Alex Aronello, Public Works Director. There'll be some, certainly some impacts on the traffic. There'll be added traffic to 88th Street. Some of that is probably a little bit offset from the school traffic. You know, the school traffic is probably the most congested periods of the day. I would anticipate that any construction traffic is occurring earlier than the, than the school period is, is occurring. But during the, once it's built out, obviously you'll have residential traffic that will occur during, during peak hours is probably the most heavily impacted. We are in very close contact with the City of Louisville on some of their development plans as well. And we've been working with them on some improvements to 88th Street on, on their side. If they happen to approve some of the development that's being approved, proposed, is it Redtail? What's the latest Redtail? So the impacts of that development will be more towards the east portion of, of that property, not on, not on this side. But Campus Drive will be extended over to 96th Street. That should relieve some of the, a little bit of the pressure on 88th because you'll have another way in and out of Campus Drive from the east side to access the schools. So we, we've been in close contact with Louisville on planning these improvements, both on our side and on their side, taking account track from this development as well from, as the town center access is prominent. So all that is taken, taken into account in the traffic projections.
Thank you. And then I just have one comment, which is about the retaining walls that you're proposing around the edge of the wetlands. The soil strength in those wetlands is probably very low and it'll get even lower if, if the water level ever rises in them. There was an unfortunate situation on US 36 in a somewhat similar situation where half the roadway fell out, fell down. So I, I, I hope you'll take good care in designing those retaining walls.
Absolutely. We could have our civil engineer address that if you'd like.
No, that's fine. I just noticed it when I was looking at the drawings.
Is that all, Commissioner Harper?
Yes, thank you.
I just have a couple of things. So the, the drainage plan, I just, I know one of the big concerns is protection of that reservoir. And maybe Steven and possibly Rebecca, you could speak to the drainage plan. You know, what happens when, you know, rain, just rainwater right in runoff from the parking lots and fertilizing plants and things like that? What, if any, impact could that have on the reservoir? How's that handled? That's question one.
I'll, I'll take a stab at it. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, and I'll share my screen real quick to help clarify what the design is generally reflecting. So there's two real drainage patterns going on within the site. And, you know, roughly the, the western half of the site drains south and then west to the 88th Street Pond. And we've gotten the, the study to clarify that the capacity is there to accommodate the drainage. And so I guess stepping back, the, the direction that we got from Boulder County, who's been involved with this review process from the early stages was, well, initially I think that they didn't, they didn't want any drainage. And then they were told, they stepped back and they decided that what they actually needed was historic drainage pattern. So, and the engineer can, can correct me. But my understanding is that the, basically Track A will continue to drain into Hodgkin-Harris Reservoir to keep levels, historic levels about the same as they have been. And then everything on the eastern side and part of the site drains into this, this drainage way over here. And then is treated with a water quality pond that's proposed for Track B. So there shouldn't be any real impact to the existing drainage area within Track C. And everything kind of gets into Track B. So on the eastern portion of the site. So, but Hodgkin-Harris Reservoir, nothing, nothing really that was, you know, developed, like nothing on the asphalt actually drains into the reservoir before it gets into a water quality pond that, that actually treats it before it continues on with the regional drainage system. So, and I don't know that it's Rebecca's real house to answer that. I mean, environmentally, she certainly can. But as far as the design goes, it's probably better for Cliff from RNR to respond.
Yeah, Steven, thanks. This is Cliff from RNR. And you're correct, we made sure that with our drainage design that the flow that's currently going to Hodgkin-Harris Reservoir stays the same and we're not adding anything additional to it.
Well, thank you. The, my other, as far as protecting the reservoir from the trail itself, you know, is, is it open to get down there in this design? Or was there any type of fencing or protection to?
The trail?
Traffic down from the trail to the reservoir?
You can't.
Or is it just too steep or?
No, the intent is not to have anyone come any closer to the reservoir than the actual trail. And that's why the trail was sited on the northern portion of Track A. It's intended for passive, just viewing access. You know, we also went through the trouble of differentiating. So this, even though this is public open space, the public easement that is associated with Track A is limited to this eight-foot wide trail area. So in addition to the, you can see this, when we zoom in, this, these Xs, that's the, the location of the split rail fence that's proposed. So, yeah, there'll be fencing, there'll be signage, there'll be additional mesh fencing to prevent pets from not reading signs. So that this is a, this is a sensitive area. That's the comment that we got from the county. County was happy with the regulations we put in place in order to, you know, further restrict access to this site.
Okay, thank you. And then, let's see, my last question was, there was a question brought up very early on in, in original public comment about the left turn lane. I think somebody said it was going to be mentioned. Did that get mentioned or answered? And does, do you remember the question, Steven?
I don't. So the roadway is designed to have, I mean, because it's just a painted median, there'll be a, there'll be a turn lane. And I think the striking's been incorporated to the 88th Street design, but Alex is jumping on to help, help out here.
Sure, there's a, on 88th Street, there'll be left turn lanes at both access points. And on Shamrock, there'll be a left turn lane from, southbound from 88th onto Shamrock.
Okay.
I think the questioner may have been referring to a left turn lane on Shamrock. Shamrock is about 38, 40 feet wide. And there's plenty of room there if we wanted to strike a left turn lane so the right turn vehicles can get around left turn vehicles. It hasn't been strayed that way in, in the past. But certainly if that's an issue, we can strike the left turn lane. There's plenty with.
So I mean, that just goes to, back to another point that, on benefit, I guess, you know, like the right of ways, the towns, the town controls how, how access moves through there. If, if there's a change that needs to be made, Alex, Alex will make it. You know, should this approval be, or this proposal be approved, Track A will be dedicated to the town and the town will have additional control over the most sensitive part of this site as it relates to Hodgkin-Harris Reservoir. So that's also, you know, an added benefit to, to the proposal.
Thank you. Okay, you want to stop sharing, Steven? Just so I can see who, yeah, see the screen. So any other follow-up questions or comments from any commissioners? Just so I can see who, yeah, see the screen. So any other follow-up questions or comments from any commissioners? If you want to unmute and jump in, feel free. Otherwise I'm gonna move on to public comment here in a minute.
Commissioner, Commissioner McCool, I think the resident was mentioning earlier about taking a left from Shamrock onto West 88th. Was that heading south? Because I think I've, I've, I've been there several times. I'm sure we all have. It's very difficult to take a left off of coming out of Shamrock and going south on 88th to the circle.
Okay.
I think that's what the resident was expressing concern about.
Okay. So it sounds like Alex could address that if that's a problem. Okay. Okay. So before we start public comment, let me just kind of talk about what we're going to do here on Zoom. And then just ask for some considerations here. So we had a lot of considerable, a lot, a lot of public comment prior via email. I believe all of our commissioners have received it. I've read through all of them and made some notes. I also expect there'll be a good bit of comments this evening. I would like to ask everyone to please, you know, pay attention to the time that you're taking. Well, we'd like you to limit your comments to five minutes or less if you can. We have a lot of comment tonight and, and we're going to be evaluating, you know, time tonight to get through this. So, you know, if you've got a watch or something, I'll, I'll, I'll keep a stopwatch going here too. And, and if, you know, if you hit five minutes or come up on five minutes, I might mute you to interrupt and let you know that. And ask you to, you know, wrap up your, your comments and, and move on. So I don't want to just mute anybody to, you know, to stop them entirely. So you'll be respectful of that. I, I may mute you just to interrupt and ask you to, to wrap up. And then also if you're, if you're on a phone, if you're, if you're dialed in, you'll need to dial star nine to raise your hand. And what we'll do is I'll just call people out and staff will unmute you and give you the go ahead to speak. And then, you know, lastly, you know, just, just take, if you just take one opportunity to speak, it's going to be hard. I'm going to try to keep notes, but if you could just not, not raise your hand a second time and try to, try to get in. I agree. A lot of people who really want to try to speak tonight. So with that, I'm going to switch over to the attendees and I kind of see hands going up. And I've got a list in front of me, so I'm just going to work my way down that list of hand raises. Kathy Cardy Mullins has hers up and is on the top of my list. So let's have her go first and if you keep it to five minutes, that would be awesome.
Oh, good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. This is Kathy Cardy Mullin, 1250 South Quiero Court. Wow, what a presentation. I wish that wasn't right across next to the HHR. It's a very nice complex. But I have to say I'm in favor of nature and the comprehensive plan in saving it for future town build out over adding more people. As you may know, I've been, you know, always a voice for nature here in town. And I haven't found one person that wants to add more people to our town. And I don't understand why we have to do that at this point. And I'd like to really ask you to really stop and think about what that comprehensive plan says, because I know that you honor that a lot. And I was going to state a couple of things that I have in my, in my notes about that, because that seems to be, you know, important. The comprehensive plan states in over a dozen places where the town forefathers, which took many, many hours, probably thousands of hours to earmark what they'd like to see for our town and expect it to be followed. And for the Zaharias property, they consider it valuable future park lands because of its proximity to the HHR, which is already open space and it's thriving open space. Yes, it's a 135 year old man-made reservoir, but it is naturalized over that time to the point where you can't, don't realize that it's man-made. It's really become an amazing migration home for many birds as well as just established wildlife. And we don't have that here in town. In Policy 4.6, it states the town should minimize the impacts of future development on this land, which is the Zaharias land, and preserve the scenic views of the HHR. So, you know, that's where I'm coming from. In Section 10, it states in many places for the town to evaluate vacant land, particularly those proposed for development, and determine whether there are viable park lands to meet the park and recreation needs of the town. I'd say, yeah. In 10-2, it says, as undeveloped opportunity areas in Superior are considered for development, which is this, the long-term recreation needs should be considered within the context of future town build out to ensure the future opportunities are not precluded. And the future needs should be given high priority consideration. And it's like, well, where do we have anything for the future? You guys have built everything out, not necessarily just your group, but like the last 10 years, everybody's build, 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 build. And it's like, okay, now what do we have left for the, for the next group? And what do we have left for our nature? So in 10-3, it says potential future needs to be preserved for ultimate build out and leave lands for recreation, education, cultural, as well as active and passive recreation. And yeah, you have that nice trail. That's wonderful. But right behind it is 180 units worth of people. And right now they don't have that. So when you're on the Saddlebrook side and you're looking with binoculars, the birds slowly scoot over to that north side because there's nobody there. Where are they going to go now? They're probably not just going to, they're just not going to land or it's going to be a lot sparser. And I'm sure Lisa, you've talked to the biologists and they've talked to me and they said, already with 88th Street, the integrity of the water quality and the nitrogen cycles in the water are changing. So, you know, what's going to happen with a major complex like that? This is kind of one of the reasons why. Last fall, here's an example of what's so special out there. There was a red-tailed hawk who dove from the sky, caught a prairie dog. It was feasting on it in the field. And then a bald eagle decided to take over. The eagle with an eight-foot wingspan just swooped down and shoot away all the hawks and finished the meal. All this in about 15 minutes. It was pretty neat. Then two weeks ago, there was a pair of osprey fluttering over the, the water and they reached down with their feet, caught a big fish and with its talents, it struggled to get it up on the, on the, on the land. And then it started feasting on it. I mean, that was amazing. And then here's another great happening. The white pelicans that you see are gathering in larger numbers as the weather gets hotter. Well, they've been shyer just recently because of the 88th Street, but they still show up. And when they do, you have a really cool opportunity. If you just stand near the HHR an hour before dusk, you can just watch these magnificent white big colliders glide overhead in formation and then land one at a time, skimming across the water. And it's just right next to you. It's so breathtaking. So we have an opportunity to claim this, this land and, and make it a natural park, you know? And that development's beautiful. Put it somewhere else. Where else in Superior can you see all these things? It's like we have National Geographic moments and we're about to give them a way to residential or commercial development instead of, of, and, and renters instead of keeping it for the quality of our town. So I'm saying we're giving nature a voice tonight and all we ask is that you listen and find a way to save this land from any development, not just residential, and turn it into a natural park that preserves the habitat and creates safe light trails for public access with regard looks to the water. Then you and your family can also experience some of this magic when it happens on the waters. So what would you, you rather have more people or a place for your family to go passively and just recreate without a lot of noise behind you in, in 180 unit apartment?
If I could get you to wrap up, we're a little over, four, five minutes.
It's up to you. Please do a U-turn. Don't rezone this land for apartments and find a way to preserve it. Thank you.
All right. And up next is Susan Bauer. And Susan, I think you're unmuted if you're still with us. She's, she's muted again.
Am I, can you hear me now?
Yeah, there you go. Very good. All right. All right, Susan. Take five minutes or less. We appreciate it.
Okay. So first question I have is how many rooftops do we have in Superior today? How many, how many units do we have?
I don't know if we're prepared to answer questions, Susan. If you could provide comment, I think that's what we put this.
I ask because, you know, I'm looking at the total rental units this gives the town. And what does that do to our rental ratio in the town? This development would essentially make the whole east, southeast side of Superior except for Saddlebrook. In prior conversations, Dennis Cavallari has talked about making this a rental community that would then be converted after eight years. And rental communities that have been converted historically do not have a good homeowner ratio. We can speak to that personally at Saddlebrook. It's something that we've been struggling with ever since its conversion. And it's something that I either keep it a rental or, you know, don't, the bottom line would be keep it a rental. I'm concerned about what this would do to the balance of the town. The town, the comprehensive plan talks about preserving vacant land to meet the needs of the future. Town Superior has five parcels. If we're not going to buy open space, what are we going to buy? In 2017 and 2018, OSAC identified Zaharias as its top priority behind CenturyLink. The CenturyLink deal is done. Zaharias' time is here. I believe Superior needs a natural park. While the plan is beautiful and a lot of thought has gone into it, I am concerned about the pinch point by the pool, that a height elevation is not a justification for a required setback. That is just unacceptable. I, you know, like Kathy mentioned, make Superior more appealing for the residents here today, not for those that are coming. For those of us who have been paying for the open space sales tax for 20 years, honor our wishes. Finally, as I mentioned in my comments, ask yourself, what will we be proud of in 10 years from now? A new development or a natural park? I end.
Thank you, Susan. Ryan Welch, I've got you up next.
Thank you for having me. I assume you can hear me. My name is Ryan Welch. I am the Chair of the Open Space Committee. We were asked to look at this development by the board for open space concerns. We reviewed the application on 11 March. To clarify, because this is an active development, OSAC cannot make recommendations on the overall land use. Only the wildlife and open space aspects of the design as presented. As has been pretty obviously stated tonight, the primary concern for us is the protection of the Hodgkin Harris Reservoir on the south side. The committee acknowledges that the plans may have changed after the committee reviewed them. And I've also heard plan updates tonight that, that is slightly different from what we've reviewed. The first thing we, we wanted to note was that for, there was a comment that said for several years following the reconstruction of the reservoir in 2014, this, the diversity of diving duck and greek species, which rely on large invertebrates for food, was lower in 2014 and 2017. However, in 2019, the Hodgkin Harris Reservoir Breeding Survey observed more diving duck and greek species in just three months that had been recorded, recorded in three years of Boulder County volunteer surveys. These recent observations suggest that the invertebrate food web is recovering. We just want to make sure that decisions aren't being made, assuming the reservoir isn't a thriving ecosystem and unique attraction to Superior. Now, I've, I've heard a lot of concern around the reservoir, so I appreciate that. The recommendations that we had come up when we had reviewed it was to maximize the distance between water and humans, taking into consideration the pool. You know, as we've seen, the pool is pretty close to the reservoir and we'd prefer to have as much distance as possible. The parking lot is also very close to the landscape that any trash or pollution wouldn't end up in the reservoir. You know, we would take the benefit of actually potentially removing the parking lot completely or also possibly decreasing the size. But, you know, Stephen mentioned in his overview and we saw in the design that that's already in work. So I appreciate that. I do agree that we would like to pull that as far from the reservoir as possible. On the trail, we'd like to maintain the design, but maximize the space between the trail and the water. Diana mentioned that this was part of the consideration in the design, so we appreciate that. We would like it to be considered to be crushed gravel for the trail if feasible. We know a lot of times that isn't. But, you know, we have concrete everywhere and, and crushed gravel is, is a nice change. We also had noticed that the snow waste needs to flow into the development drainage system. It wasn't clear in the plans, but that was clearly addressed tonight. So we appreciate it. The only other thing that we noticed was that in the landscaping plan for Track A for habitat restoration, we'd like to see more than just a landscaping plan, but actually a plan for the habitat to be restored around the reservoir. And I don't know if that goes to the developer or if that's more of a town plan that needs to be developed since that will then be town land. But we would just, we'd like to see a more comprehensive plan, including pollinators, native grass, as well as native trees and shrubs. Those are my comments. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate that. Natasha Flyer, you are up next.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, I'm Dr. Natasha Flyer of 1640 Ebert Way, Superior. I want to say that the Zaharias property Hodgkin Harris Reservoir, because I really don't think you can separate them, is really a unique opportunity area. And I like to use that term because it is used in a comprehensive plan. And I think we can realize a planning role in the comprehensive plan, but really not as outlined in Policy 4.6. F, which is what you originally, was one of the original slides in today's presentation, but really as outlined in natural open spaces. Now, and that's in 10-4 and 10-5, if you look onto those pages. Now, why do I think this is really such a unique, you know, this, you have to understand what you're developing. You're not just developing like the Richmond property. You're not developing by Audrey Lake. This is not just another undeveloped piece of land. This land has five points to it, okay, that no other piece of land in Boulder County has. None. And what are these five points? One, Boulder County open space listed at a critical wildlife habitat. Two, it is the only such one within town limits. Three, there is no other municipality in the county that has such a distinction. Not even Boulder has a critical wildlife habitat within its town limits. Not Longmont, Lafayette, none of them, only Superior. This really puts us in a very distinct place. Four, there are four different ecosystems represented. Not one, not two, four different ecosystems. Aquatic, riparian, wetlands, but most importantly, playa, which are seasonal mud pits, basically, that are pit stops for birds. That's why it's such a fantastic migratory zone. And because of that, point five, over 130 species visit the area between April and August. Now, if you look at the ecological assessment that you have on your website, on the Open Space Advisory Board and that Ryan was alluding to, what, you'll see that it echoes these things. But what really upset me, and I'll be honest, I got very disturbed because I read all the literature, all these documents that you have listed on your agenda today. I read them. Okay. And I felt there was a direct misrepresentation, a direct misuse of scientific data in these ecological assessments that were done by Boulder County and others that are listed on the open board. And they're cited by Norris Design on behalf of Steelway. And in their, in their mitigation of impact, they are really misusing and misinterpreting this ecological assessment, as well as Smith. I was very upset. Smith, there were contradictions. And on top of that, the survey was done in January. The whole reason this is labeled as a critical wildlife habitat is because of the April to August season. Of course, you go there in January, you're not going to get anything. Um, so why am I so upset by all this? Because guess what? I'm a geoscientist and I've worked for over 21 years as one at NCOT, which is one of the largest federally funded environmental agencies and, you know, in the country. And I've been called to Washington DC to make decision-making processes. And if I ever testified with such stuff, I would be wrong, ping, and tarred. So, I mean, that is why such behavior, I think, is absolutely appalling on the part of Norris Design as well as Smith Environmental Engineering. They are not representing the situation correctly. So I do suggest, obviously, I really like the suggestions of a nature park. I think, you know, I think, you know, putting a wildlife trail through there with educational signs, I mean, one thing we have up at NCAR is we have a trail right behind it that has all these signs of all these phenomena that happen right overhead. You look at the clouds, the fronts, everything. And we could have signs of wildlife, with all the four different ecosystems, with all the bird species there. And we could educate our children about an environment that is unique to their home, Superior. This is unique to Superior. No one in Gilce has it. Boulder doesn't have it.
And Natasha, if I could get you to wrap up, please, that would be great.
What I'm saying is there's really no better way to meet the goal for this land of the comprehensive plan. It can really set Superior's side. Thank you for your.
Thank you, Natasha. And let's see, Kate Kelly, you are up next.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Kate Kelly, 2035 Eagle Avenue. I live in Saddle Brook. So I just want to thank all of you planning commissioners for your leadership and your commitment to the town. And I appreciate the work that you guys do. I also need to share, unfortunately, my unhappiness with town staff at this time. I am very, very upset with the fact that we were told when we joined this meeting this morning, or this evening, that we were unable to do public comment regarding agenda items. When your last meeting was on May 5th and the letter that was mailed to all of us was dated May 4th. So quite honestly, that doesn't even give us opportunity once receiving public notice, other than when you guys are actually reviewing and making a decision. So that is a little upsetting. Next, I am, and I know this is not time for getting questions answered because we are right, right at the end here, but I'm concerned with why they aren't building for sale units. In the price point that they're at, there is not enough housing demand for rental units between $2,500 and $3,000 in this community. I live in Saddle Brook and the rentals for the two bedrooms are anywhere between $1,600 and $2,000 a month, depending on the time of year and who is renting that out. I'm telling you right now, a two-bedroom unit at Saddle Brook that's renting for 1,900 square feet, three out of four times, has four cars. So I'm concerned that there's not enough parking proposed for this new development. Next, in terms of the retaining wall for the pool, I'm going to let the, those who are passionate about the wildlife and much more well-versed than me, keep handling that and hammering that home. But I am coming to you as a community member and a homeowner in Superior. I am also sitting on the HOA board at Saddle Brook right now. And a big, big problem that we are having is that the way our pool was installed and the retaining wall that we have, we are currently having a lot of issues. So David Harper, I just want to applaud you for sharing your concern with that and making sure that they are building appropriately. And then I'm curious if this property is going to be switched to owner occupied at some point. So I know that that was already mentioned. It's going to start as a rental. Will it be converted to condo or townhome units? The way that I see the plat map going, it almost looks like it's being subdivided, so it'll be easy to make those legal descriptions in the future. Lastly, my biggest concern is if this developer and this designer is saying that ADA compliance is important to them, I think they need to be providing more than 18 units. They are only providing 10% of the total units that they're building as ADA compliant. And again, in Saddle Brook, that is a huge problem we have. Our one-bedroom units are not ADA compliant, unfortunately. So that was one of the unfortunate things that I learned after moving in here. And then lastly, just to wrap up, I'm going to ask you all, consider your constituents and consider the people that have put you in this position of power and in this position of having the opportunity to vote on the future of our town. Are you working for the people that put you in this seat or are you working for the people who don't even live in this town yet and future residents? It is apparent that we need housing, especially in the front range, but the town's just got to slow down a little bit. There's almost 1,600 units that have already been approved and there's several hundred more in the pipeline. So, thank you. Kate Kelly, 2035 Eagle Avenue.
Thank you, Kate. Mary G, you are up next.
Yes, hello. Good evening. My name's Mary Gane. I live at 1831 Mallard Drive. It is a unit within Saddle Brook. I thank you for the opportunity to comment. My comment, I did write a letter also, so I will be brief. My comment may cause existential sadness, but aren't these days of the pandemic filled with existential sadness? I haven't heard a plan for the prairie dogs who currently live in underground housing units in one of the last remaining prairie dog colonies in Superior. At this point, I'm opposed to this development on behalf of the prairie dogs. I could perhaps more easily accept the rezoning and this development if I knew it wasn't built on the wholesale extermination of a keystone species, a highly social species that should not disappear. So, thank you again. Thank you for listening. Good night.
Thank you, Mary. Peter, Rupert, you're up next.
Hi, good evening. This is Peter Rupert. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Great. I'm at 185 Mohawk Circle. Tonight, I would just like to state my concern that the proposed development is likely to significantly degrade wildlife habitat at Hodgson-Harris reservoir. HHR, as I'm sure you know, is by far the most important wetland habitat in Superior. For the last three years, I've participated in a breeding bird survey at HHR. So I personally have a lot of firsthand experience observing the many bird species that use the reservoir. And one thing that is particularly clear is that many birds become quite nervous when there is much human activity along the south side of the reservoir. And I've even seen birds flush from their nests along the shoreline when people walk past. From a wildlife perspective, it was a big mistake to allow the roads and the buildings of Saddle Brook to exist so close to the water's edge. If buildings and trails are also allowed on the north side of the reservoir, the birds will be pushed from both sides and I fear that many of them will just abandon HHR completely. Many other people have pointed out that elements of the proposed development, the parking lot, the trail, even the swimming pool are within 70 feet of the reservoir's edge. But I don't want you just to take my word for it. In an ecological assessment paper that is posted on the town's website, Boulder County's senior wildlife biologist writes, quote, "If the parcel north of Hodgson-Harris will be developed, we foresee the value of the wildlife habitat decreasing significantly." End quote. "I think that the opinion of a scientist who has studied HHR for years is the one that you should respect above any others." So given all these concerns, I would ask that you instead consider a plan that fits better with the parcel's unique surroundings in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Maggie Top, you're up next.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to hear us out. Really appreciate it. The, the development's beautiful. I live at 1607 Reliant Circle. So this is right in my backyard. And my thoughts, I'm going to speak about, a little bit about the heart and also about the head. You know, the brain behind it. So the heart is around a comment that Kathy made at the beginning, a National Geographic moment. There's the lanterns going on. There's the development in the town center. I've lived here for 25 years and I've seen a lot of changes in the town. I realize there is progress, there is growth, there is development. I get it. There's also the heart around the quality of life and what brought us to live in this community in the first place. And I just see that disappearing. And I wonder if there is another thought here. Do we need apartments? Do we need townhouses? Do we need more residential areas? Do we need more strip malls? Could we have something that is a gem, is a jewel? Others have mentioned this. Could there be something that just puts us on the map as Superior to make this something really special and beautiful? That's the heart of it, right? Then there is the, the brain or the logic. And that's around traffic. And that's around quality of life and stress and noise. As we were starting this call, I had to close my windows before we even have, you know, the development here with the improvements on 88th Street, which I think is very important. It's an important thoroughfare and I think there needs to be sidewalks to get the kids to school. I'm concerned about this neighborhood street. It is a neighborhood street. And if you lived, you know, close by, I don't know where members of the, the board live, but if you lived here, you would know that it is a neighborhood street. It has become so congested without even having any more development, without even having 181 apartment units. It's very congested. Now, with COVID, it's, you know, we're all working from home or many of us are working from home. But it is very difficult even getting out of this development, out of Shamrock and onto 88th just to get to work. And with what's going to happen at Redtail, who knows? What I hear is a lot of speculation. I hear a lot of, well, we don't really know, but the studies tell us this. And, you know, there's a part there that is, yeah, the studies tell us this, but what about quality of life? And traffic and noise? And with what happened with the Highway 36, I can tell you, I cannot even sit on my back porch in the summertime without getting noise from the highway. So when I hear about the retaining walls, yeah, that's nice. And yeah, it's nice to think about the possibility that maybe buildings will buffer that noise, but I would rather see nature preserve, nature win, if you will. Because everywhere around us, look around, the land is disappearing. That's the heart of it. It's that National Geographic moment, right? It's that Joni Mitchell paved paradise and put up a parking lot. Well, it's great. It's great to create a nice little park. But what about the gem that we have and the jewel that we have where we live? And I've also heard comments here, and I know I'm getting close, Bob, here to the top of my five minutes. And I'm watching my time, so if you'll just indulge me. People will do what people will do. So yeah, put up a, put up, put up a fence. Tell people, put up signs. Can't let your dogs chase the wildlife. Put those signs up. People will do what people will do and so will animals, because that's what they do. I can also tell you around the parking, I don't know what's best, more parking, less parking, if this development goes through. I can tell you right now, Shamrock is a parking lot. No offense to my neighbors in Saddle Brook, it's a parking lot right now. And when you try to get out to go to work in, air quote, normal times and you have school buses coming because there's a school stop there, I'm nearly close to ending, Bob. You can't even see what the traffic is. It's just so challenging. Anyway, I'm going to close now. I thank you for the opportunity to listen to me and I appreciate the work that you do. I appreciate the presentation that we had. It is beautiful. I would rather see it be something more natural that we can hold out to the rest of the community, to our county and say, this is a jewel. It's priceless. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Maggie. Rich Kaufman, you're up next.
All right, good evening. Rich Kaufman, 1310 South Boyero Court. I want to say thanks to the developers. Your time and attention to detail is very apparent. Your commitment to developing on this property is also apparent and, you know, it's a lot of effort to put together an application like this and I understand that. I want to say thanks to the planning commission for taking some time to review the application and listen to the residents. However, when it comes to voting on if we need to make this a residential zone, I would like to recommend that you don't vote on that or vote against that in an effort to maintain open space. I'd like to echo Kathy Cardy-Mullen where she says it's a very, very important resource very important resource for nature and it's a, really can be turned into an open space and a sanctuary for people as well. So with that, I'd like to conclude and say, let's just hold off on the development. Let's reconfigure and push towards something where we can have open space for our current residents. We don't need any more residents in our town. We already have development going on. And we don't need more traffic. We don't need more drain on resources. We don't need more children crowding the schools and dividing the teachers' attentions. So it's very simple. It's very straightforward. Let's just not vote to change the zoning. Again, it's a great application. I commend you, everyone, the developers and the partners' efforts, but it's just not for this town and I hope that you can take me into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich. Kelly McCalle, you are up next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you for your time and for doing what you do. I, 1950 Shamrock Drive in Saddle Brook. And I'll just try to keep it brief, but I, why can't we keep this as an open space? As a community learning center, maybe where kids can go. 88th Street is already way overkill. 88th Street affects every member of our community because we have the hospital there. And just adding more development, which is nice, why can't they move that to the new town? There's plenty of open spots there. But 88th is just, it's already out of control with the traffic. And the improvements they're doing is just going to bottleneck up at the bridge where it stops because it's only a two-lane bridge. And with the school and everything, which affects almost everyone in the community too. And the wildlife, I mean, it's so unique to, as everyone has said, you know, the prairie dogs, the coyotes. Sometimes, I've seen elk over there. We've seen bobcats. And it just, the eagles, all the different birds that exist over there. I think building is just going to, you know, wreck it all and that we really need open space. We're building so much around here. And I'm just rattling on, but anyway, thank you and please, please let them build on this. It's, we need the space. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's the end of public comments. Let's see, I, oh, we have one more, one more hand just went up. Bob Puccio, do you want to go next?
Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, Bob Puccio, 1692 Reliant Circle. Same thing, we have 52 homes in Reliant Circle, two cars per home. It's pretty tough getting out of here on school days when we go back to school. Not to mention what's happening on Saddle Brook. They can leave on Enterprise. They have more of a choice than we do. We have one way in and one way out. I appreciate all the improvements on 88th. That is a beautiful property. I find a little irony about the inspiration from Chautauqua. You know, Boulder took a lot of inspiration and they saved a lot of their open space back in the 30s, including all those foothills into Chautauqua. And people can enjoy it today. So one thing I had said before, you know, give us a tax assessment. I don't know how many rooftops are here and I don't know what that property's worth. Buy it and give us a five-year tax assessment to pay for it and let the town buy it. Put it to, put it to the residents that live here instead of giving us that many more homes. And I can't imagine what the traffic will be like. Three bedrooms. Three bedrooms, we're really a dorm room for CU Boulder. Three, three cars per unit is what I'm anticipating. So I, I would say, I would, I would appreciate not moving forward, and I would much rather see it be open space or make it a Chautauqua development, 25 little cabins in there, and they can be B and Bs and rent them out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. We have a Katja Sofia, Arkeia, is up next?
Yeah, can you hear us okay?
We can.
I'm Misha Center, I'm Katja's partner. We are living at 2037 Eagle Avenue in Saddle Brook. I just wanted to echo a previous statement that the south side of the reservoir is already too cramped by the homes that I live in. I find it a little bit hard to imagine that there can be justification for building close to the north side of the reservoir based on the fact that we built close to the south side of the reservoir. I just, that's hard for me to wrap my head around from a wildlife point of view, so just wanted to echo the statements of the other comments saying that I really think that wildlife needs to be seriously considered when voting on this development. And that my strong preference is to keep it as open space and as a wildlife reserve of some sort.
And just to add another argument for keeping it as an open space is that I think we've all discovered now more than ever that nature is a huge part of maintaining our mental health, and as this current crisis continues, and as future crises occur, having this sort of unique access to an open space like this is incredible and really good for our community.
All right, thank you. Olivia Verma, you have your hand up, and you're up next.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, my name is Olivia Verma, and I live in 1807 Reliant Circle. I want to voice the same thing as everyone else in terms of the traffic around the Shamrock Drive. It is really crazy, and I can't imagine how an apartment building will affect it, especially since, as brought up previously, adding a left turn lane isn't going to make a difference when the traffic is just going to be crazy going each direction. I also want to voice too that the area is very beautiful and having that open space, I think, is a really big delight for everybody around, so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia. Okay, with that, I think we are at the end of public comment. Yep, well, we have one more hand up, take one more, and then we'll, we'll call it after that. And Jean Folsom, you're up.
Okay, can you hear me now? This is
You can, yes.
Yes. My name is Jean Folsom, and I'm kind of new to the area. And, but I've learned about the Hodgkin Harris Reservoir is being such a wonderful bird area. And other, other wildlife habitat and the prairie dogs and everything, and I, I was really surprised to find out that no one in the birding community even knew about that reservoir. And it's because there's no access to it. And also, I was very surprised that the town hadn't been able to, you know, realize this and do something with it like everybody's been talking about. I am real concerned that if it is surrounded by apartments, that the wildlife are going to move on. And you cannot buy a piece of property, put it in a lake, and expect to see the wildlife that is there at the reservoir right now. It is a treasure, and we have a wildlife refuge in Alabama where I'm from that has a visitor center, and they have an observation building, which people can go and observe an area about the same size as this reservoir. And it, you know, it just stays busy all the time. It's a wonderful, we, I mean, if you put in the trails and people are out there walking and walking their dogs, the wildlife is going to move on. I mean, it's just, I've been birding for about 20 years now, and I know, you know, what that kind of thing. So I appreciate it, I didn't really have a whole lot to add because I'm new. But you do have a wonderful resource, and I hope you'll consider doing something with it, the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Okay. Let's see, so I feel, I'd like to make a couple of comments before we ask the developer to respond, and just to reiterate just to the public that's listening, you know, that our, you know, we're, we're responding to a developer's request to change zoning and, you know, put forward a plan, a development plan for the, for the Zaharius property, and I want to encourage residents, you know, this, this, whatever happens tonight, this will move forward to the town board, and those are your elected officials, we're appointed commissioners, we have a responsibility to respond to a a private party who desires to develop their land and has put forth a plan for us to review. And I also want to just note that, you know, this, this area is not open space. I think we mentioned that at the beginning, but the reservoir is county-owned, that area is county-owned. And the Zaharius property is privately owned. And the, the town was very involved in, in, you know, repairing the dam on this reservoir with the county that resulted in the creation of this, of this pond. And just so for those of you who are new, you know, that was an intentional act, it was done to, you know, want to do exactly what it did, so you know, do you know that the town, you know, did respond to that, to issues with that reservoir a number of years ago? And get that dam rebuilt and you know, created the environment that's there now. So with that, I'll offer, if any other commissioners have a quick comment before we have the developer respond, I'll, I'll open up to you, since I took advantage of making those comments. And feel free to unmute yourself if you have something to say.
Oh, this way, and real quick, while the public's still listening, I just want to let everyone know, no matter which way this goes. I really appreciate all of the public comments, we did, you know, I'm assuming I'm speaking for everyone here, we do read those, and we do weigh in on those thoughts and things like that. As, you know, Chair Chairman McCall mentioned, you know, the application before us tonight is not an application to buy the property and zone it as open space, the application isn't to build a nature center, you know, and maybe as much as we would all like to see that, that we're weighing in on this specific question, and we don't get, we don't have the ability as a commission to ask a different question tonight, so we have to answer the one question that's in front of us. So again, really appreciate all your comments.
Okay, with that, I'd like to give our, the developer, the applicant, the, just a chance to respond to the comments that were presented tonight, and there were some questions that came up. I tried to note them, so if you would like to take an opportunity to do that, and if I see anything that was missed, I'll, I'll try to make a point to bring it up.
Again, this is Dennis Cavallari. Is Ron Bean available?
Ron is on the call, I see. Or is listed here.
Yes, I'm available.
There we go.
Yeah, Ron, maybe you could respond, you know, so much of the commentary surrounds the reservoir and the habitat over there, and obviously, we've, we've studied the habitat, and Ron's been responsible for that, so Ron, why don't you respond to a lot of that, and like, maybe I can finish up then?
Yeah, the the habitat of the Zaharia project area is upland habitat, it's primarily inhabited by prairie dogs, as mentioned. You know, the quality of that habitat and those grasslands, and I'll even quote what was in Boulder County's 2017 report is that the, the upland areas can be described as non-native pasture grasses, invasive non-native grasses, and non-native forbs intermixed with some native prairie grasses and forbs. And, and so, and that is what we found as a habitat and everything. So most of the questions were involved about the indirect impacts of having a reservoir or having a development this close to the reservoir and the habitat values of that reservoir. There, we've looked at that, and in our reports and things, we did provide numerous recommendations on how to minimize that. How to minimize and mitigate those impacts. Many of the same recommendations were also provided by Steve Jones in his report. And also by Smith Environmental in their report, as mentioned by Ryan Welch, you know, some of those mitigations were also included in that, and that includes adding a buffer zone, you know, fencing the area to keep people away from the reservoir. A big concern was water quality. There's been a lot of engineering, as been discussed earlier, that the runoff from the hard surface areas and things will go to water quality ponds to the east and west, that the only runoff will be coming from the parcel A. Parcel A will be dedicated to the town, we recommended that, that area, that parcel, as many other people did, would be restored and revegetated with native grasses. It's very bare ground right now with a lot of possible sedimentation and things going into the pond. From the holes, from the whole Park at Rock Creek property with, without directed drainages, a lot of that stuff is coming through the prairie dog town, which is fairly sparsely vegetated and entering the reservoir, so providing some vegetation filter in there on the town's property would be a great benefit with the vegetation and things. The wetlands along US 36 are, have been completely avoided, and those, that habitat will remain intact. You know, there is, there is going to be impacts, there are always impacts from development. You know, going from vacant property to development, there are species that will decline, the most obvious ones are the prairie dogs. Prairie dogs are not typically consistent with urban development. And even the Boulder report on, for the Harry Hodgkin Harris Reservoir, they describe this as a no prairie dog zone on, on the Boulder County property because they are concerned about the integrity of the dam and brewing into the dam. If anyone's worked with prairie dogs through the years, it's pretty much impossible to keep prairie dogs from expanding to wherever they want to, so it'd be hard to have prairie dogs adjacent to the reservoir and keep them out of the reservoir and, and being a threat to those the integrity of the dam, so you know, I think if you want to ask other questions or build upon that, I'd be glad to answer any questions directly from the, the commission. Yes, my name's Ron Bean, I'm Senior Wildlife Biologist at ERO Resources, we are at 1842 Clarkson in Denver.
Thank you, Ron, I know, and this might be, this one's probably not for you, I know there's a question about whether this would switch to owner occupied at some point, if there's plans for that, that question came up a couple of times.
Yeah, somebody had somebody had quoted, or felt like they had quoted me saying that this would be converted. I've never said that it would be converted, what I did say was it would never be converted until after eight years, when the, when the construction liability laws expire. But that's not to say that it would be converted. Chances are strong that it'll never be converted to a condo, that it will probably always remain in the hands of an institutional owner with an institutional management company run by me, so that's what I would say on that. And then summing up on the waterfront and the, the project being built next to the reservoir, you know, there's an overriding concern, obviously, you, as we all heard of the habitat next to the reservoir, the wildlife, et cetera. Our project is further away than the Saddle Brook project. And currently, nobody has access to the reservoir in that side of the property, it's a private parcel, and from my understanding, we've been at this now for over four years, and nobody has stepped forward with $7 million to buy that property. So we feel that by developing the property and dedicating the waterfront, returning that four acres to its natural habitat with, with the boardwalk there is a, is a vast improvement, and it's going to open up the, that waterfront and the wildlife that's there, et cetera, to the vast majority of people who want to go out and access it. So we feel it's a, it's a win for the community as opposed to we're coming in and destroying something. And nowhere in our report, or the Boulder County report, does it say that, that the wildlife is going to abandon this reservoir after our project is completed. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. All right, I promised a 9:30 check-in, that was about 40 minutes ago, but it just seemed with the timing of things and the public finishing up comment to getting a response that it was appropriate to let that continue, but you know, let me get, if I could get some feedback from the commissioners, you know, our next steps are any, any additional questions for the developer, or for staff, a closing of the public hearing discussion, and you know, recommendation, so do we feel like we want to try to tackle that this evening, or continue this hearing? Can I just get some thoughts from folks? I'll just pick, Jerry, I'll start with you.
Thanks, Chairman McCall.
Anytime.
Um the you know, by trade, I'm a Realtor, I'm a residential Realtor, I appreciate developments, this one looks very beautiful, it's very well designed. But I'm torn. I'm torn.
Oh, and hey, Jerry, I'm, I'm looking to see if we can get, I'm just doing a check-in to see if we want to try to continue this discussion tonight.
I would, I would vote to continue.
Okay. You're, you're in favor of that. Lisa?
I could go either way, but just, I feel like no discussion is, you know, productive past a certain point in time, I don't think we're there yet, but I also feel like we could get there, so I'd be open to talking to continuum states as well.
Let me then, since we got to another, is there anybody who feels like we need to stop this now, or should we, I suggest we at least maybe continue for another half an hour or so and see where we get, but if everybody's, let me know if you're not okay with that.
The only thing I would say, I think we have to put a limit on it, that, you know, at 11 o'clock, we're done, we're out, or we're something. Because I'm with Lisa, this, we could talk all night about this, if we want.
Yeah, I agree. All right, so everybody okay if I maybe do a 10:45 check-in if we get that far, and then we'll
I'm not going to want to go much past that.
Yeah, I would agree.
Fine by me.
Not if you stick to it, Commissioner McCall.
This one I can, I just didn't really want to interrupt public comment or the developer's response, that seemed, that seemed like an important milestone, so. All right, so I will, I'll set my alarm for 10:45. Okay, so you know, our choice is now, I, you know, we, if there are any more questions or comments, let's do those now, otherwise I'll be looking at closing the public hearing and us moving on to discussion, so.
I've got one question for the developer, and maybe it's the clarification, but on the affordable housing, the whole idea, you know, that we have affordable housing, again, I I applaud what you're doing, Lisa said it really well, I think Superior is way overdue for having this, so I applaud you for having it in here. But I think what I'd like to understand is what happens after eight years, because I know you said you think an institutional owner's going to own this forever, but if it flips in eight years, what happens to those affordable units? What guarantees are there that they flip as affordable units when they flip? I'll, Dennis Cavallari responding. It's my experience that all affordable units are deed restricted for 30 years. We'd be willing to enter into an agreement that deed restricts those units subject to CHAF. subject to CHAF, annual rent increases pursuant to HUD guidelines, et cetera, for a 30-year period.
Okay, that's, you answered my question very, that's great. So, thank you.
So, yeah, following up on that then, permanent, but not actually permanent. So, a 30-year term, not, not a permanent term is what you're proposing then. And then, again, from a deed restriction, yeah, you know, I'd, I'd want to have, you know, make sure that that's, that language is finalized before it goes to the board, you know, kind of how that gets handled and carried forward in case, you know, this property flips and resells and that actually gets carried forward and understanding with any future buyers, both as a for rent unit or a, or for sale unit condo project in the future. And again, staff, I'd just encourage you to lean on Boulder County Housing Authority with experience on, on how to manage these over time.
We're fine with that.
Maybe Dan can give us some guidance on that? Because, I mean, change of ownership doesn't necessarily mean that, that would carry over, does it?
It could.
Yeah, yeah, usually, yeah. I mean, that's something I'd kind of have to look into a little further. But, yeah, I believe there's some kind of language covenant, you know, or kind of a deed restriction that's put in place that usually covers over to, to subsequent owners.
Denver does that on their affordable housing. They didn't do a good job and they got themselves in trouble. But they did, they do exactly that with the deed restrictions, so.
There'll be an agreement that's, that's currently being worked on between the town and the applicant. That'll go toward, to the town board at the time of the town board meeting. So, but that is being pursued concurrently with this.
Great.
All right, other items that were kind of brought up, I'm not encouraging questions, but just to make sure there aren't any more comments or questions about them. There was the lighting on the monument sign, trash receptacles. We've already talked about affordable housing. This pool, pinch point, you know, of the pool consideration. And then, you know, the comments by OSAC Chair Ryan, who, you know, just around protecting the reservoir, maximizing distances that the parking lots close, the trash receptacles, interesting gr, crushed gravel for the trail. And his big one, which was rather than a landscape plan, would we be in consideration of a plan for a habitat restoration? Because my, my question is any, are any of those off the table? I, you know, maybe this is the question for the developer before we close the public hearing. Did I rattle off anything that raises any big concerns that we might have you address with staff if the commission?
Bob, Dennis Cavallari, most of them sound acceptable. I, I'd like to, you know, I couldn't write as fast as you were reading.
Sure.
No big deal, but, you know, the crushed gravel trail, no problem. The trash receptacles, the monument sign lighting, I, I think it's, I think all that is easily handled and taken care of.
And the big one was a plan for habitat restoration rather than a landscape plan. And I'm not sure I can define that or that we can define that tonight, or if Stephen has a sense of what that would mean. Or maybe the opportunity is to work with OSAC to get that defined. Does that sound too scary or?
I, I have, I'll be honest with you, I have no idea what that is.
Okay.
And if the request is for us to completely disregard all the landscaping throughout the project and turn it into something else, is that, is that what it is? Jared, we know more than I do.
Yeah, come on, can you get the eyes to hear me?
We can.
This is Jared and Norris, and we're, we're happy to work with you on a, on a restoration plan around the, around the reservoir kind of edge there. We do have a really specific irrigation basin, native seed mix that we're showing on the plans, but we can work with the town and Stephen and ERO and whoever else to make sure that that restoration plan's, you know, meeting, meeting everyone's expectations.
Yeah, I'd just clarify that. I mean, we had some comments that came in and were acknowledged that, you know, this, this application's kind of in process and there's some changes that have been made already. And I know that Rebecca from Smith Environmental made comments about the landscaping within Track A as well, and those have been related to the applicant. So, I think some of this is already being addressed. I just, and we'll continue to make sure that it's addressed adequately and rely on our environmental consultants on both sides to do that. The one thing I want to bring up, and, and maybe it's worthwhile to, to have a crusher finer, different path on, you know, through Track H due to the sensitivity. I'd get their comments on this as well, but we sacrifice ADA access if we, if we remove the sidewalk from that. So, it's just something I want to make sure everybody's aware of before we make that decision.
All right, any more comments or questions before I?
I have a question I'd like to ask, if I may. I, I'd like to ask when, if, if this application is approved by the planning commission and the town board, when would construction start? And has it been affected, have your plans been affected in any way by the existing situation with COVID-19?
Dennis Cavallari answering Commissioner Harper. Let me start with the COVID question and work backwards. What's, what's been affected, not so much the real estate market, but the financial markets? I'd say for a solid 45 days, everybody, everybody had pencils down and nobody had done anything. And I'm referring to the financial markets. So, if we've been affected by that, it's, it's a slower, lower reaction to consummate an institutional financial partner on this deal, which a deal of this size would require. From a timing standpoint, we, we would, we still have to prepare construction drawings for the vertical construction. The, the submittal package on the civil drawings virtually within weeks of being completed. So, the horizontal infrastructure could proceed, but it would all have to proceed together. So, I wouldn't, I couldn't anticipate us breaking ground until probably October, November of later this year. That's best case.
So, any other questions?
Yeah, I'd like to go back to the, to address the pool. A lot of concerns around that is, were there any other design ideas as far as where, you know, location of the pool and the leasing building? I know it's, if I were, if I were the developer, the architect, anybody, I would, I probably would locate it where you did. But my question is, or my concern is the reservoir and the number of people. If you, if you put 100 people on the pool deck and start, you know, going to town, having a good time, there's going to be a lot of noise generated from that. And I think that might be the biggest impact to the reservoir. And to ease some concerns, relocating the pool to another location.
Again, Dennis Cavallari answering. I've, I've never seen, I've developed projects like this all over the country. I've never seen 100 people gathered around the pool. We've got a, I've got a 400-unit project in southeast Denver. And for the 400-unit project in the middle of the summer, the most I've ever seen is maybe 15 or 20 people at the pool. So, from a usage standpoint, it just doesn't happen. The pool and the clubhouse is further away from the, from the core and the nesting grounds than, than the other buildings. So, you know, we feel that the pool and the clubhouse, the leasing center, et cetera, are located in the, the best location possible. And that location has really mitigated any kind of exposure to the, to the, to the habitat areas in the reservoir.
All right, any other questions for the applicant? Stephen, we can probably ask clarifying questions too as appropriate, or Dan, if need be.
Just, just one comment, Chairman McCool. I wanted to follow up on Stephen saying that the path to Track A, although gravel, crushed gravel seems like a good idea. In theory, there's a couple of reasons why you shouldn't do that. And he mentioned one, ADA accessibility and two, also associated maintenance with that. So, I would be in favor of continuing the plan as is regarding that crushed gravel versus concrete there.
All right, any other questions for the developer applicant? I'm going to close the public hearing if not. So, all right, seeing none. I'm going to officially close the public hearing. That means no communication from the developer. I'm not sure what our technical capabilities are muting that, but I'll just ask for their respect and not jumping in during our, our conversations. And I guess I'll open it up to the commission to start discussion. We, you know, we have three things before us. If we have questions about that, you know, Dan and Stephen are available to, to make that clear. I think that the zoning, the zoning piece is, although that's the last thing we technically approve, it's probably the bigger discussion. And if everybody's okay, I'm thinking that might be an important one to start talking about the zoning change requests. So, I'll just start with Jerry up at the top and, and, you know, somebody, if people want to jump in and follow up on or ask questions and interrupt, I think it's just us now. So, we can go for it. So, Jerry?
Thanks again, Chairman McCool.
That's all right, I'm not there, Jerry.
So, we were just having a discussion. I want to thank Dan and Stephen for your information earlier, your emails and your advice. It's, it's very helpful. This is a tricky situation, I think. So, we're just giving comment, right?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, how we attack this is kind of up to us. I, I was thinking zoning is, is probably the bigger discussion than the plat and the, the final, but.
Well, the, the zoning, I mean, one of the options for rezoning is residential, and this is a residential project.
Yeah, yes, so, well, maybe, let me read this one piece that's just, I think is important for us to consider as we're, the comprehensive plan verbiage reads that, which is, you know, kind of our, the, the subjective area we have, the interpretation piece is that the preferred land uses for this area include a mix of commercial, office and moderate intensity residential uses such as patio homes and senior housing. All or a portion of the site may also be considered for potential acquisition as high-value open space. Then 4.6F2 relationship to adjacent users, uses states incorporate the site design considerations identified on figure eight below, which you have to go look at those as appropriate, to minimize, to minimize the impacts of future development on adjacent residences. And they see an equality of the Hodgson Harris reservoir by considering the scale and intensity of future development. The location and screening of parking and potential traffic impacts of new development and access, pedestrian access to the reservoir should be provided as part of future development. There's OSAC recommendations go on, but that's the, that's the comprehensive plan verbiage. And as Dan kind of pointed out, this is, you know, is this in the, you know, is this in the best interest of the town? Is that how it reads? Let's see, well, farther the goals and policies of our comprehensive plan. So, that's the criteria that we're, we're faced with on the rezoning. Is that, that accurate, Dan?
Yeah, so, another thing I would just kind of point out, and that is, that is accurate. I would look at that criteria and whether it furthers the goal and the policies of the comprehensive plan. You know, obviously, some of this language in the comprehensive plan can be kind of, you know, a little vague and ambiguous. So, I, I think kind of the way, you know, potentially for the commission to look at this is while, while you're not bound by previous agreements, it might be at least helpful to look at how this language has been interpreted kind of previously. And I know, I think Stephen had pointed out a couple of, you know, other, other developments kind of in the area, which might also kind of give you some, you know, indication and how to kind of look at this. But, but ultimately, it comes down to the commission's interpretation of this language, you know, and whether you believe that it does further the goals and policies of the, of the comprehensive plan. Another thing to say about the comprehensive plan is, you know, there's, there's more specific, you know, portions of it relating to, you know, say, this property. And then there's kind of more, you know, broader, you know, goals and things along those lines. So, I think probably a way to look at it would be what's more specific to the property and then kind of what's the general overview. So, just some kind of, you know, advice in terms of how to, how to look at this kind of from, you know, the legal perspective.
Okay. So, you know, maybe just getting feedback from each of you, if you want to speak up. I mean, maybe you're in favor of the zoning or if you're not in favor of the zoning change, just, who wants to, Lisa?
Oh, you just muted.
I'm sorry, I just muted myself. Sorry, yeah, I saw you, and now you're muted.
Yeah, I'm happy to jump in on this one unless somebody else wants to go. I've been thinking, obviously, I'm sure we all have been thinking about this a lot. And I'm speaking specifically to the rezoning. And I think we can get more into the nuance of the site design through the, you know, final plat site plan and are there appropriate buffers and things like that. But, you know, in my opinion, eight dwelling units per acre is moderate housing, moderate density housing, you know, that certainly wouldn't mean low, but the comp plan doesn't say low-density housing. And I wouldn't consider eight dwelling units an acre high-density housing either. So, I think in that particular item, we're okay. And then when you, in my mind, when I look about, you know, impacts and protecting, you know, the, the residents and kind of all of the, the best interests of the city, the impacts associated with commercial and office development from a traffic perspective, you know, would certainly be much higher. And so, I know we heard a lot about, you know, impacts to traffic. And I think from that perspective, only a residential use is better from a traffic perspective. And I just also want to say, I just don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to a property owner to not zone them, not rezone them for the purposes of not allowing them to develop if a mark, if a property's not marketable, you know? So, yes, they have commercial zoning now, but the context around the site has changed so dramatically, you know, from 30 years ago, 40 years ago, whenever this was contemplated. You know, northwest Parkway was going to be through here. We were going to have an interchange onto the 88th Street location at 36. So, I think, I don't think it's good practice for a community to not rezone just to simply not allow development. So, that being said, generally, I'm in support of the rezoning to allow residential on that question.
Any other thoughts, Mr. Harper, you'll quickly get some?
I, I agree with that. But the town goal has always been to develop this property from the original PUD to the 2012 comprehensive plan. It says that the preferred use is commercial, office or moderate residential. The site may, and in this context, I think I'd emphasize the may, be considered for open space. So, the moderate residential seems to me a very reasonable use of the property. I looked at the reservoir last week and again today. I think it's a great asset to the community. There were pelicans, heron, wading birds and Canada geese, which I don't care for that much. However, the Smith report essentially says this amenity can be preserved by taking appropriate precautions. I recognize that may be, that may be optimistic. The OSAC report from last August describes the land as a weedy vacant lot. I think that's right. I also agree that open space is nice, but the city's just acquired almost 200 more acres from CenturyLink, which was also a high OSAC priority. And there are several thousand acres of open space west of McCaslin. So, I think the issue of retaining this particular loss of open space has diminished in significance. I, I think the traffic, the traffic issues that Lisa mentioned are correct. I think changing the height of the maximum building from 120 feet to 50 feet is a big improvement because that's actually about the same height as the buildings in Saddlebrook. And with the exception of Saddle, Building 24, most of Saddlebrook would. And with the exception of Saddle, building twenty-four, most of Saddle Brook would be hundreds of yards from the new development. And the best existing views are of the resident, of the reservoir anyway. But the proposed development seems to be quite in keeping with the spirit of the comprehensive plan. I think the developers proposing to make nine of the use of units affordable, I agree, that's a good, good thing to do. I know it's many less than Boulder would require, but as far as I know, they'd be the first affordable unit since the Superior. And overall, the proposed development seems to me to comply with the regulations it needs to comply with. And that's an important question for us. I know also that in the memo, memo that Mr. Williams sent out to us, he mentioned the potential financial benefit to the town from this development. I understand that's a matter for the trustees rather than the planning commission. But as a resident, it seems quite significant to me, too.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Are there, are there any concerns about rezoning?
So I would like.
I echo everything that's been said.
Let Ben go, if he hang on, I'll go right back to you.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I just echo everything that's been said. I think, you know, regional commercial made sense if we thought there was going to be an interchange off of thirty-six. But, you know, it's kind of a vestige of the past at this point. And rezoning the residential seems to make the most sense and probably will have, well, certainly minimize most of the impacts the residents are concerned about compared to anything developed as commercial or office.
Anthony?
Absol- absolutely, I, I agree with the other commissioners on that. And I just wanted to echo that. I think that also there is precedent, precedents for rezoning for developments such as this. And I've been a part of that, so I know that we've done it in the past. And the rationale behind that, which includes that our community is changing and our needs are changing. And it's, in my opinion, fits better with our needs than doing something commercial there. And I just want to echo what I think I've heard a couple of people saying, that this is private property. And the only way that we would ever hope to have this zoned as open space is to have this landowner donate this to the town. And I don't know that that's very likely. This is, you know, this is valuable land. And I, I think that this landowner has the, the right to develop that in a way that he feels like he should. And as long as it fits with what we envision our community as and our town as. So that's all that I wanted to add, really.
I think the number was seven million dollars that was thrown out, that nobody's offered to come buy it, so. And, you know, I, I'm pretty much in the same place. I mean, I've struggled with this a little bit, but, you know, the, the, you know, the open space value of that land. I mean, we looked, I was on the OSEC committee for many years. And it is one of the last pieces of land that was on our list. And it was that way for a reason, just because it was a very weedy area. And, and, you know, I, I, I think the protection of that reservoir is key. I, I feel comfortable that a lot of efforts being put towards protecting that. I, I would like to see that process continue, you know, with staff and the developer. And, you know, maybe even, you know, just reiterate it in our recommendations to, to the town board. If we, you know, approve this, because it's, it is, it is a beautiful, beautiful area. I've been over there a couple of times recently and including today. And, you know, just trying to judge how far away residences are and, you know, try to make some judgment in my own mind, you know, if, if, you know, an additional residential parcel is going to affect it. And the reality is, it probably will. But most of the wildlife around this area is resilient and, you know, capable of, of adapting to, you know, the growth that we have. We're, we're seeing that everywhere, so that's my, my two cents worth. Is there, I mean, do we, you know, the, the process here is, Steven, can you just rattle it off real quick for us again? Is it the, the replat, and if you go through it one more time, let's see?
It would be the plat first, and then the rezoning, which you guys are discussing, and then the final plot site plan.
Yeah. Are there any, are there any things, any additional oh, recommendations we want to make, or restrictions we want to put on this, or requirements that we want to put on this?
Are you talking about the final plot site plan or just the rezoning and plat?
Probably the, probably both of the, well, I would think that the final, the, the final plat and the, the initial plat, I think, are the only, I don't know if we, I didn't hear many comments on the rezoning, so.
Yeah, I guess, no, I, I, my comments were specific to the rezoning. I don't know if.
Sure, yeah, well, that's fine, yeah, bring those, let's just get them out of the table. I'll try to get them down so we can.
I would be concerned to try and avoid a situation like the one we have at Autry Shores, where we approve a development and nothing happens for a year and a half or two years. And then a different developer comes in with a different proposal. That would not seem to be very satisfactory for the situation.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I'll look to Dan, but I don't think we have much control over that one, or.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's, we couldn't kind of put in a specific condition, you know, into, into something like this in terms of how, how quickly they need to, you know, start building or, you know.
Generally, though, they'd be vested for what, three years under this approval? Would that be the typical timeline?
Yes.
All right, so I've got the three areas. So Lisa, do you have, do you have some things related to the zoning? Do you want to?
No, I'm fine on the zoning. I feel like we're, we're, I think probably my guess is most of our issues rely with the final plot site plan. And depending on how many there are, I don't know if this is kind of a good stopping point for tonight.
Yeah, there's that consideration, it is ten forty. And since it doesn't seem to be in intense rush on this, we could continue this.
Steven, do you want to weigh in on kind of schedule for the applicant on anticipated dates for hearings? And, and maybe what a continuance might look like?
Just let me flip my calendar, that hasn't been touched in two months. All right. Now, we have a, a June second final commission meeting that this would probably need to be continued to in order for us to keep it on track. The board was expecting to hear this on the eighth, which makes it a very tight turnaround, but it's something we can handle. I think especially with, you know, the, the direction, the, the big hump that I guess I saw was the, the rezoning request. So, but I, from what I'm hearing from you, and I guess maybe before we close this meeting, are there big issues related to the final plot site plan? Or are there, you know, items that we want conditions applied to in order to improve rather than change or, you know? You know, is there any level of that that you guys can, you know, give me a, a heads up on before we go? So that we don't anticipate a, a board meeting on the eighth that we can't, we can't get to.
I think the pool was an item that we probably could be, if there's consensus on some direction there, that I've heard that probably is substantive. I think you're right, I think the rest of them are probably, at least that have been raised so far, you know, relatively might.
And parking, I think, yeah, question.
Parking, parking could be a good discussion, too.
Okay, well, that's good. We can work with the applicant on what our options are for, for both of those things in order to have some, some ideas in anticipation of that discussion on the second to make sure that it's effective and efficient, so.
Do we want to do an off date, or do we want to wait till June second?
We could consider an off date if you guys wanted to do that. The, the twenty-sixth is not available because Memorial Day is when the town board would have met. So town board has a, has a meeting on the twenty-sixth. They're actually considering the final development plan for Marshall Bridge that night. So if we wanted to have a, a meeting ahead of the week of June first, we would have to have it either the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, or. I don't know that we've ever had a meeting on a Friday, but, uh, twenty-ninth, I'll say it.
No, thank you.
That would be hard for me, but I could probably make it happen Wednesday. I don't know if Wednesday or Thursday are options for.
And I, I don't know, Martin's probably still around, but I assume that Zoom probably gives us a little bit more latitude to schedule a, a meeting when we might have an OSEC meeting or something like that, that night as well.
And we, do we need to check with the applicant now? Is that something we can do?
We would, I mean, I guess I'd poll you guys first for whether or not you have availability on the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth. And then we can present that to the applicant for an option.
I think either works for, for me. I don't think the Rockies, the Rockies not on the twenty-seventh, so that was the only thing I had.
Either day is fine for me.
Jerry?
You muted, Jerry.
There we go, I'm good for both dates.
Lisa?
I'm good for the twenty-seventh, not the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-seventh, Steve?
Yeah, are we talking like a seven o'clock or six, at least a six o'clock on?
Yeah.
We can set it for either.
Yeah, we could do either.
As long as, as long as it's six or later, I'm good on both dates.
Okay, David? You said.
I, I said I'm fine for those days.
Sorry, Anthony?
The twenty-seventh is better for me at seven o'clock.
Jason?
The twenty-seventh isn't necessarily good for me, the twenty-eighth is. I could, I actually could do the twenty-seventh, but it'd make a couple of my family members extremely upset, but.
I could, I could probably make the twenty-eighth work if needed.
All right, Ben?
I can do both.
All right, so the people who had the twenty-seventh, is there anybody who can't, that the twenty-eighth is just horrible for, that sounds like.
Commissioner Stewart?
Twenty-eighth is horrible.
You can't do horrible, and Jerry can't do twenty-eighth, right?
I can do both dates, I'm available both dates.
Oh, you could do both dates, okay, so that rules Anthony out. Jason's family would be upset, so we have a point.
I'm the only one that has an issue for the twenty-seventh, I think everybody else is good.
It's either that or we just push it to the second, so. By doing it on the twenty-seventh, we're giving staff a little more time.
We do have a meeting on the second anyway, if I didn't make that clear earlier.
Yeah.
I'm not so sure that we're that far apart on this.
Yeah. I don't think so either, I just think there's a couple of items. I mean, it's, it's just that it's ten forty-five and it could be half an hour. And, you know, I can see, you know, Ben's eyes are wide open, mine are. I'm having a hard time keeping them open. I'm hoping the next meeting will be a short one.
I'd, I'd be quite happy to go with a continuance.
Yeah. Maybe you want to just do the second? Is that enough time, Steven, you think? Are you? We, we, we crush, pushing you too hard if we just take it to the second?
No.
Is that okay with everybody?
Is the applicant available, do they have strong?
And then is the applicant available, yeah, we can ask, can we unmute? Dennis?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I guess I need a motion, right?
Yeah, so, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, so another thing I just wanted to, the, the applicant signed the, an acknowledgement of having the hearing, you know, via Zoom. And I just want to make sure, you know, that you just get acknowledgement from, from them that, you know, that carries over to, to a June second. Because I think the actual waiver had to do with today. So I would just ask that, you know, if Dennis can just kind of confirm that, that you're consenting to a, a virtual meeting on, on the second.
Okay, Dennis?
Yeah, we're, we'll, absolutely, we'll consent to that. I've, I signed a document, I don't remember seeing a date on there, but happy to re-sign it or sign a new one.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. And Lisa, I'm guessing the motion is to continue with the virtual meeting on the second, that's.
Yeah, so we'll make a motion to continue all three agenda items, the rezone application for a PUD amendment, the final plat, and the final plat site plan to June second at seven PM.
I have a motion on the table. Second from Commissioner Harper, all in favor, want a verbal, Philis?
Yes, yes, I need a verbal. McCool?
Yes.
Richie?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Malia?
Yes.
Miller? Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Reese?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Harden, yes. Thank you.
All right, so the motion passed unanimously. And last on the agenda, I think, was just staff announcements. Is there anything we need to talk about tonight, Steven, or?
Other than just that you're going to meet and discuss application to subdivide the Superior Shores property, which was mentioned by Commissioner Harper earlier. So there's a different developer out there, and they want to provide a townhome product versus a condo product. So they need to subdivide the land. That'll be the other agenda item on the June second meeting. And I'll work with staff here to decide what order we sequence those meetings in and, and update both applicants on, on that.
Okay. That sounds great, we'll continue with them. Anything from anybody else before I adjourn?
No, thank you, and thank you for a really great packet. I appreciated all the supplements on this one.
Yeah.
Thank you guys, appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
We're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.